All right, good evening. Thank you all for being here. Thank you for that beautiful music. The regular meeting of the Board of Education of March 7, 2017 is called to order. Welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. Any item that will be voted on this evening has been posted as required by state law. This meeting is being televised live and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the Board website for replay times. This meeting is also being streamed live on our PPS TV services website. Chair Curler is absent this evening. Item 10 on tonight's agenda, the school staffing update, will be heard next week at our March 14 meeting. In addition, Resolution 5409 has been withdrawn from the business agenda. Thank you for that wonderful performance. We would like to welcome the Hosford Middle School Band. We're honored to have them with us this evening, and I'd like to invite Music Director Scott Johnston to the testimony table to provide a few comments. And thank you to all the students, that was wonderful.[132.28][132.28][applause] Sure.
Okay. We're Hosford Middle School, I'm Scott Johnston, the band director. This is my third year here at Hosford, and we're very excited to be here to play some music for you. We're gonna play a piece for you called Dancing Snakes.
Bravo. Thank you so much. All right, that was great. We will proceed with our student testimony. Ms. Houston, are there any students signed up for student testimony?
Yes, we have five.
All right.
And our first two speakers are Gwen Kalazowski and Callie.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, you'll be called up next.
Just state your name before you start speaking.
Yeah. Okay, so my name is Callie Quinnward. I am a junior at Grant High School, and I'm one of the organizers of Portland Student Action Network, and a lot of us are here today. So, we're a group of high school student activists fighting for equity.
Just one second, I don't think any of these mics are working.
Yeah. It says "mic on always," but, oh, no, now it is. Here, okay. Yeah, so as I said, nope, it's turned off again. Okay, I'll just try to talk loudly then. So, yeah, so my name is Callie Quinnward, I am one of the organizers of Portland Student Action Network, and we are here today, we're a group of high school student activists fighting for equity, inclusion, and dynamic policies in our schools and city. We organized a rally against Betsy DeVos a few months ago, as well as a protest against the Portland police killing of a teenager, Kwanis Hayes. So, we're comprised of students from many of the Portland Publics High Schools, as well as representatives from private schools and schools outside the district. And some of our members are here today to present a set of demands to all of you. We are not here to personally attack any of you, but we are here to hold this Board accountable. We will be going through several issue areas where we see that Portland Public Schools needs drastic improvement. We understand that PPS may be facing a budget deficit and other problems, but these are things, as students, we feel need to be addressed, prioritized, and changed. As we all know, this is a volatile time in this country, and public education is under attack. It is crucial that we secure our schools as safe, empowering, and equitable places for all students. To us, there appears to be a general lack of accountability and transparency within Portland Public Schools, and we would like to work with you to change that. We recognize that all of you care deeply about education and work hard as Board members, but the current state of many of our schools is unacceptable. Portland Public Schools is out of line with state and national standards. It's time you double your efforts to fight for your students. To be clear, as we go through our demands, we will not be following your time limits. Maybe once you all begin to follow your own equity and non-discrimination policies, we will follow your meeting structure, but that's not the case at the moment. We do not intend to take up this entire meeting, but we do intend to explain ourselves and our demands fully. We would appreciate if you listen to the students you're elected to serve without interruption. If you do choose to ignore us or attempt to shut us down, we will refuse to leave. If you allow us to get through our testimony, we will allow you to continue on to other matters. We likely won't take more than thirty minutes. Do not think today that we will be simply speaking and disappearing. We will send you a concise list of our demands and objectives over email tonight. We have also included students' contact info and are happy to work with all of you to make these things happen. A few of us have testified previously and are actively working on these issues within Portland Public Schools already. We know this is a lot of time, that it will take us a lot of time and work to reach these demands, but they are vital to making our schools safe and positive environments. If you choose to ignore us, ignore this, or fail to work towards these things, you can expect us to be back. We will be watching, we will not go away, we will hold you accountable. Thank you.
All right, so my name is Dylan Palmer, and I'm a senior at Grant High School. Some of you may know me, I've spoken in front of the Board before. I came here to speak earlier in the school year to talk to you all about Race Forward and work being done by the Student Equity Team at Grant High School. Just to refresh everybody's memories, Race Forward is an event that we have at Grant in which there is a facilitated discussion in every classroom about race. These events are planned predominantly by our Student Equity Team with the help of the Staff Equity Team and Administration. When I spoke here, I proposed to the Board that Race Forward and Student Equity Teams or something similar be introduced to schools across PPS. As far as I'm aware, no action has been taken on your part. So, I want to start by explaining to you all the importance to me of Student Equity Teams. Before there was a Student Equity Team at Grant High School, the equity work being done was slow, ineffective, and only focused on teachers. Focusing on teachers is good, but it doesn't confront the problem of a lack of racial awareness amongst the student body, and it doesn't allow for students to have their voices heard and engage in a dialogue with their teachers and peers about race. You might be surprised that students have good ideas about these subjects and how to confront them. This is exemplified by the fact that as soon as our Equity Team was created, we were able to get school-wide events tackling the topic of race off the ground. The work of our Student Equity Team got us sent to the Courageous Conversations Conference in Austin, Texas, where we received an award, and it got us sent to the White House where we met President Obama. Student Equity Teams have been vital to the progress made by Grant High School in their equity work. If something like this were to happen at all schools, then every school's equity work would be much more creative, engaging, and effective. We are demanding that PPS policy require student and staff Equity Teams at all schools that include grades six through twelve. We also demand a district-wide initiative to increase racial awareness through conversation, similar to Race Forward, that will be planned through the collaboration of the Student and Staff Equity Teams. We demand that this process be tracked publicly and that some measure of accountability or incentives are established to stimulate this process. We would like to create a platform of continued communication between our organization and the district so that you all can ensure that you are hearing the voices and getting the ideas of the most important population within PPS, which is students. Next, I want to bring up the issue of school names, and I want to start by having everybody imagine something. I want you to imagine a terrible man. A man so furiously racist that he pushed for the relocation of indigenous peoples to better benefit white people. A man who had thousands of Native Americans killed, people he thought of as savages. A man who owned hundreds of black slaves because he thought of them as property. A man who murdered another man. The man I speak of is Andrew Jackson. We have a school named after him in PPS. So, imagine being a black or Native American kid and being told to go to school and value education, to value a system that puts you in a school named after a person that, if still alive today, would think of you as a savage or as property and have no value for you. The implicit racism of naming schools after controversial and harmful figures has an implicit negative impact on students, teachers, and the entire community. We demand that PPS begin a process to potentially change the names of schools named after controversial and problematic figures, including Jefferson and Jackson. We think the perspectives of the schools' communities on the names of their school be gauged through meetings or surveys. Should the population of the school have a substantial objection to the name, we demand that a renaming process decided by the school be planned and implemented. Should the population of the school have no objection to the name, we demand a measure to be taken by the school to inform the student body and community about the history, positive and negative, of the figure the school was named after. This could be in the form of a plaque or sign in front of the school, in addition to class curriculum, an annual newsletter, an assembly, or whatever the school decides through collaboration with students. And as always, we demand complete visibility with both of these things. Thank you.
Thank you. How many, excuse me, how many people are you hoping to have testify this evening?
I think it's around six more.
Okay. So, we will stick roughly to our time limit for each speaker because we have a really full agenda tonight, and all these people are here for issues that are equally important to them, but bring them on up.
Testing, all right. Good evening, everybody. My name is Mushyam Athubi, I'm a junior at Cleveland High School, and, yeah, I'm pleased to be over here. Today, I come to emphasize the importance of having diverse, diverse staff that best represent the ethnic and racial minorities at our school. Those students, including myself, are the ones that are in need of support, especially if in a predominantly white school. From my perspective, it's hopeless to ask any kind of help from someone who can't fully understand where you're coming from. White teachers may be able to empathize to some extent, but they're still foreign to being a person of color in America, and more specifically, in public schools. Therefore, they cannot truly relate. To have someone who's been in your shoes and has overcome the same obstacles that you have to deal with today makes a difference. It instills a sense of true support and understanding. You no longer feel alone in the struggles of being a minority, but are able to vanquish them together. The Oregon Minority Act has done nothing, hasn't done anything. It claims that the number of minority teachers should be proportionate to the number of minority students, but yet, I don't see any of that at Cleveland High School or district-wide. There are eighty-five teaching staff in the building of Cleveland High School. Out of all those, there are only eight teachers of color, less than ten percent. Now, let us draw back to the overall minorities. Fifteen percent of the school self-identify as people of color. The teaching staff is disproportionately white by five percent. That means five or six teachers of color are missing, therefore, we need more teachers of color at Cleveland. We demand that public schools make recruiting and retaining teachers of color a high priority and release a plan with measurable metrics to do so. You guys cannot have teachers of color staying one year and then leaving another. A temporary solution is not a solution whatsoever. Do not make the mistake of thinking that just because a teacher of color has been here in the past, that you have the right to say that this act has been accomplished. We have questions we would like answered, such as, what is the support system for newly-hired teachers of color? What is the district doing to retain and recruit teachers of color? What are you doing to make them feel welcomed? And lastly, what can you do to hold teachers accountable for creating a hostile atmosphere for teachers of color? Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Yosha Ness, and I use she/her and they/them pronouns, and I'm a senior at Metropolitan Learning Center. Ugh. I'll be addressing the district's need for inclusive and comprehensive sexual education. I recently took a health class through Virtual Scholars, and I also have taken health class in fifth grade, and I took it again in sixth grade. But while taking these classes, they all felt very non-inclusive, and they felt that they were missing information that high schoolers and other students should be learning. I'm really lucky because I've grown up surrounded by a lot of resources that I chose to take advantage of, so I have become knowledgeable through these other resources, and other students may not have these opportunities, or they do not take advantage of them, instead relying on what they learn in the classroom, which is why having a fully comprehensive health education in our schools is a necessity. The district also needs to create policy and curriculum that makes students no longer feel unwelcome or acknowledged while learning, especially within our health classes. Portland Public Schools are obligated to create some sort of policy or curriculum for teachers that include an emphasis on consent and what it looks like. We briefly discussed consent in my Virtual Scholars class, but we need to talk about what it is, what it means, and why it is important. The nation and the world is struggling with issues of sexual assault and violence, and one way of helping to end these issues is through educating our students. I demand that health classes discuss the gender and sexuality spectrum and continue to include it in discussions throughout the class. It is critical to put a policy in place and training for teachers to be able to teach this. Currently, the students are teaching their teachers and other students. Just last week, I went into my class to help lead a morning circle, it was a fourth-grade class, and instead, I found myself teaching the entire fourth-grade class about pronouns because the teacher did not know how to explain them. This should not be what I, as a student, should be spending my time on. Teachers should also know to use inclusive terminology and teach in an inclusive way that allows queer students to feel that they belong. Teachers need to actually teach their students how different types of contraceptives work. I have personally taken three different health classes through PPS, and not a single one of them taught us how to actually use and put a condom on correctly, which can cause serious consequences for a sexually active student. In a study of African-American females in Atlanta, Georgia, out of the women who reported one hundred percent condom usage, thirty-four percent showed biological markers of unprotected sex, and this could easily be due to improper condom usage, and it should be required that teachers actually teach us how they work and how to use them and how to access them in order to keep ourselves safe. Not only do they need to talk about contraceptives, but they also need to discuss other ways to protect yourself after having sexual intercourse, such as peeing afterwards, because I never got taught that in schools, and you should be doing that. Teachers should also educate all students on different types of menstrual products and how to also use them safely. It's important that this be taught in an early age, as many people start menstruating at an early age, and when no one has taught them about what it is, they panic and think something is wrong. I was taught about menstruation in my fifth-grade class after they separated us, boys in one girl room and girls in another. There are many issues with this. First, some people do not identify as a boy or a girl, and this makes them feel as though they are not welcome. Second, everyone should know what is going on with everyone, the hormones, the periods, et cetera. This connects to my third issue, which is that we need to stop stigmatizing ideas such as menstruation by separating us, the boys never learned about menstruation or menstrual hygiene products, creating a school environment where many are uncomfortable. We call on you to allocate funding to menstrual hygiene products in this year's budget and make it a regular practice for janitorial staff to restock these products in bathrooms. Our health classes need to have more educations on healthy relationships and what that looks like. There needs to be focus on the different ways that students can seek help if they feel they're in an unsafe relationship. There needs to be focus on not just physical abuse, but emotional abuse. Oregon State Policy states that students must be educated about the Romeo and Juliet laws, yet I was never taught that in a single one of my health classes. I know that this is a difficult and controversial topic, but I hope to see change done in our schools soon, and if you have any questions, feel free to contact me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Finn Holly Blue, I'm a senior at Grant High School, and I use he/him pronouns.
Hello, I'm Cassie Mansfield, I go to Metropolitan Learning Center, and I use they/them pronouns.
We demand full, whoa, we demand full inclusion, support, and protection for LGBTQ-plus students in Portland Public Schools. I want to provide you with some statistics about LGBTQ-plus youth for some context. About thirty to forty percent of LGBTQ-plus youth have attempted suicide. Ninety-two percent say they hear negative messages about being queer. Many queer students are not able or do not feel comfortable to be out at home, and school can sometimes be even more harsh. Queer students are forced to live in fear of mental and physical violence from family, teachers, doctors, peers, and more. While Portland Public Schools lists LGBTQ-plus issues on policy documents, saying our LGBTQ students must feel safe and supported at school so that they can thrive academically and socially, you must move further than just three pages handed to teachers at the start of every year. It is very important to include this information, and we thank you for that, but this is simply not enough.
So, every Portland Public Schools should have multiple, fully-accessible, gender-neutral bathrooms. We are also concerned that these bathrooms are being used mainly by teachers, staff, cisgender students, and able-bodied students, and not for their intended purposes. We're aware that this building does not have a gender-neutral bathroom, and on top of that, the gender-neutral bathrooms are often one of the only places where trans and queer students can feel safe and validated at school. So, because of this, there's often a long waiting line to get into the bathroom, which means students can miss up to fifteen minutes of their class just waiting to use the bathroom, or they're forced to use a bathroom that does not align with their gender identity. So, our hope is that in the future, there'll be more gender-neutral bathrooms, or all the bathrooms are gender-neutral, so this would not be the problem, but for now, there needs to be more steps taken to increase accessibility for trans and gender non-conforming students, as well as for students with disabilities. We would like more signs showing where the bathrooms can be found, and more teachers raising awareness, telling students where to go, and mandatory labeling on the bathrooms and announcements, so people know where they are and who should be using them. And another concern that we have is that students' chosen names and pronouns are not respected on attendance, synergy, or elsewhere. We ask that all teachers provide students with a confidential survey at the beginning of the year, asking for names, pronouns, as well as normalizing the sharing of pronouns in group discussions. With this, teachers must hold themselves and other students accountable when they misgender another student by recognizing and correcting their mistake. Misgendering a trans person is recognized as a hate crime, so...
We believe that, we believe that in school curriculum, I think this is working. Um, sorry. We believe that school curriculum throughout subjects needs to be changed to be more inclusive. In classes, there's no mention of queer history or anything LGBTQ-plus related. In a world where queer people are not represented in any way, in our minds, it can become normal to not see our history, but the damage is continued. We are here to say that we cannot let this be normal. It shouldn't be normal to question the validity of our existences. It shouldn't be normal to not feel safe at school or at home, and it shouldn't be normal or acceptable to turn a blind eye on this. Currently, our curriculums are heteronormative and binary. This has to change. Just for people in the audience, I will be saying a homophobic slur. Two days ago, something was written on the wall of a bathroom at my school. It says, "The faggots who use this room are going to burn in hell, your gay ass is gonna get shot." This was written in one of the two official gender-neutral bathrooms at Grant High School. As Cassie said, gender-neutral bathrooms are not, are one of the only spaces at school that queer and trans students feel safe and comfortable. While these messages are terrible, I didn't find it to be shocking or a surprise. Queer students hear sentiments like this every day, but having it written in writing is scary. I know students who didn't come to school this week because of this, and I was disappointed by how this was handled by my administration. Without any conversation or statement about it, they covered it with a thin layer of white paint, but the words still showed through. I think this is a metaphor for the situation. While we can cover events like this up, the messages and pain will always be there. It is time that we take action that moves past a letter to parents or an LGBTQ-plus inclusivity sticker in classrooms, especially with hate crimes rising and with Donald Trump rescinding anti-discrimination policies. We also demand that LGBTQ-plus-related staff trainings are mandatory and occur multiple times per year. It is unacceptable and irresponsible to suppose that staff are well-versed in these complex and multifaceted issues and allow them to continue teaching students without proper training.
We also acknowledge that no one person will ever be one hundred percent informed on these topics, but considerable action needs to be taken as soon as possible, and we hope that you will listen to what we have to say and that we see the changes in our schools. Please reach out to us if you have any further questions. We know this will take time, but we are committed to making change, and we hope that you guys are too. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Naamok Okue, and I'm a senior at Grant High School. Hi, my name is Naamok Okue, and I'm a senior at Grant High School. I moved from Ghana in West Africa about eight months ago, and I'm here to talk about the district's policies concerning undocumented students. First of all, I'd like to commend our district for the effort in protection of undocumented students. The current district policy concerning rights of undocumented students, that's well to notify families about ICE efforts to gain information about students. It's also good that it restricts staff from incurring information about students and families' immigration status. However, I believe the role of PPS in protection of students and families should not end there. According to the district policy, any immigration and naturalization service employee which intends to enter the PPS property must first notify the superintendent and district general council in person with its intention of adequate notice. thereafter, the superintendent can take steps to provide emotional and physical safety of his students and staff. As good as this may sound, there's definitely no protection to anyone at all. To me, what comes to mind is that after their protocol has been followed, what is next? Would the district go ahead to disclose information about the immigration status of students and families? Some of us, we walk every day in this country, and we walk closely and we tread carefully because every single day, we are scared we might risk losing our friends and family. Even before we talk, we look around because we feel we might target it because of the way we speak. Even before we talk, we look around because we feel we might targeted because of the way we speak. For some, every day in this country is an addition to the anxiety and the fear of being deported. This is the reality we live in and this makes it quite evident that the district policy is very weak and offers no protection to students. We, therefore, we suggest that in addition to interrogating ICE employees, the district needs altogether withhold information about students and families' immigration status from ICE employees. By doing this, the district takes no part in supporting the displacement of students and families. Also, PPS families will feel safe and assured since the district will enforce its policies to the letter we believe. As stated by, as stated as the responsibility of our school district, which is to give each student the opportunity and support to meet his or her full potential or their full potential. It's important that our district supports us and give us the necessary protection we need. Also, students from other districts have attended Charles Immigration Information Sections with experts in immigration. They get the information they need about how to keep their families safe when ICE shows up. The question on our minds is that, why hasn't there been same section for PPS families? And does the district really have the interest of all students at heart? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Adam Nyack and I'm a junior at Cleveland High School. Today, I'm speaking to issues surrounding district-wide disciplinary regulatory actions and the problematic nature of school resource officers within Portland Public Schools. A student's individual experiences surrounding disciplinary actions can have a large impact on their future within the school system. In order to ensure disciplinary actions that maximize student potential, we must mitigate student suspensions and expulsions. As we all know, one suspension can significantly increase the likelihood of dropout as well as increased risk of further suspension. A study by the Councils of State Governments Justice Center found that that when controlled for campus and individual student characteristics, being suspended or sus- expelled made a student nearly three times more likely to come into contact with the juvenile justice system within the next year. In addition, it has been proven that minority students are disproportionately suspended and expelled from school. This includes students who identify as lesbian, gay, bisexual or transgender and those with special needs. A study by the Civil Rights Project at the University of California, Los Angeles, found that middle school suspension rates were double the national average in urban school districts, with urban middle schools often suspending more than a third of their black male students. As I'm sure you are all aware, this is also exceedingly prevalent within our school district. As reported this past year, black students are four times more likely to be suspended or sus- expelled than white students within Portland Public Schools. In Oregon K-12 students, black students are 2.3 times more likely to be suspended than their white counterparts. This is disproportionate with the demographic here in Portland and found to be even worse than, within PPS than statewide. Portland Public Schools claims to be combating this, these statistics. Between 2012 and 2015, suspension and expulsion rates were cut by 49%. However, this did not address the racial disparities between the numbers. We have heard of the three-pronged approach, which involves culturally responsive teaching, positive behavioral interventions and restorative justice. However, we have not seen action taken within our own institutions and do not see data that supports progress. Equity trainings are optional and do not occur enough in schools for teacher to make cha- teachers to make changes in their behaviors. When only some administrative staff understand the significance of the issue, disciplinary actions will continue to fail minority students because this issue starts in the classroom. I'd like to remind us all that while speaking to these issues, we are not merely speaking to statistics, but rather to the future of students' lives within our city. You may claim that this to be a national issue and that we have been working on it, whi- to which I would agree. However, this does not serve as an excuse to not become more aggressive when addressing racial disparities within our city today. Portland may be predominantly liberal, but it is also notoriously racist and we are demanding further action surrounding the protection of students of color within our school system. We are aware of Riggler's Restorative Justice Program that was funded by a three-year grant terminated in 2014. We wonder how restorative practice is being priori- prioritized now within this institution and in others. We are here to demand further funding to be allocated for mandated district-wide restorative practices in this year's budget cycle. It is not an issue that can be curbed or postponed as the education of so many students of color has been countless times due to the unnecessary suspensions and expulsions. In addition, we seek to problematize the nature of school resource officers within educational settings. Within the district, there's little to no information on school resource officers and their place within educational institutions. Despite the limited information that is available, I was able to find that SROs are meant to provide a school environment that is free of crime, the fear of crime and intimidation and disorder, so that school staff and students can achieve their education goals without distraction. I would argue that SRO's presence within Portland Public Schools creates more intimidation and distraction than it mitigates. Police officers are not meant to be present in our schools. No staff member should be permitted to carry a gun in our schools. Additionally, no staff member should be permitted to arrest students on campus during school hours. The presence of SROs in schools propagates an environment of fear and disrupts the learning environment. SROs do not ensure school safety and prevent misdemeanor. They make minority students feel unsafe and cost the district thousands of dollars to fund annually. The city of Portland claims that the school resource officer works closely with the school staff, students and parents and that their primary activities are problem-solving, education, mentorship and crime prevention. We would like to see the data that supports this cra- claim because as a student, I do not see these outcomes. I urge you all to talk to students at any institution in which a resource officer is present. Ask them, "Does your school resource officer provide education, mentorship and work closely with you, your parents and your schoo- school staff?" I can almost guarantee that if they know an SRO, they will say no. We call for the immediate removal of SROs from educational settings. With the available budget priorly spent on SROs annually, PPS could fund the expansion of restorative practices. It is time for the board to take action and there are practical changes that can take place district-wide. I thank you for your time and hope that you all can start to work to best serve all students. Our equity work must become more than just a lens and as a board, you must commit to meaningful next steps. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Isabella Utrecht and I'm a senior at Metropolitan Learning Center.
My name is Tetetso and I am also a senior at Metropolitan Learning Center. We will be talking about policies that need to change around ability inclusion. Right now, our schools are lacking proper support structures for students with mental and physical disabilities. As students with disabilities, we know that having a disability is already difficult enough to navigate without our school system working against us. It is crucial that our schools support, include and empower students of all abilities.
Mental and invisible physical disabilities are often looked down upon or disregarded altogether. When a student has a non-visible disability, teachers are quick to question the validity and are often unwilling to accommodate it. If someone comes to class and says that they were unable to complete an assignment because of a broken arm, teachers generally would excuse that student or provide an extension. However, if someone comes to class and says that they couldn't complete an assignment because of an anxiety attack or chronic pain flare-up, teachers would likely label this as an excuse and mark that student down. Teachers need to be provided with trauma-informed professional development, as well as professional development on how to identify and support students with non-visible disabilities. If a student communicates that they are struggling, instead of turning this in, as, instead of seeing this as an excuse to get more work done, they should be provided accommodation and flexibility.
There also needs to be more services and policies regarding mental health. Most schools either don't have a licensed psychologist or have one who is largely inaccessible to students. At high schools, the role of counselors is seen more as someone who switches around schedules than someone available to talk with. Substance use is met with immediate disciplinary action rather than support. Addiction is a mental illness and many students who use drugs or alcohols are coping with other factors in their life, sometimes including school stress. For many, sus- susceptibility to addiction is in their DNA and it is incredibly harmful for this to automatically result in suspension or expulsion rather than counseling. So we call for an end to zero tolerance policies for drug and alcohol use. We will begin the sh- the shift to counseling-based interventions, especially in this area, to see effective and equitable outcomes for all students. For students with physical disabilities, day-to-day activities can become a challenge and accommodations are substandard. Even our own Secretary of Education didn't even know about the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, a federal law regarding disabled students. With the strong possibility of this upcoming bond passing, we call on you to make the ADA a priority spending point. Schools often have just one single elevator in a location that can be hard to reach and takes even longer than walking up the stairs. Students who are not visibly disabled can be shamed for using these elevators. This is not the only accommodation that, this is not the only accommodation that is not always implemented properly. For instance, as Cassie said, den- gender-neutral restrooms that are for trans, non-binary and disabled students are often used by cisgender able-bodied students and staff. The existence of these accommodations alone is not enough.
Additionally, there are certain classes that require a lot of moving around or activity which excludes and isolates students who cannot participate. Note taking can be difficult, either from issues keeping up or no access to computers. Oftentimes makeup assignments can be even more work or cut into the student's personal time, as opposed to students who are able to do the class in, the assignment in class. Teachers need to be more conscious of how their activities might be challenging to the students they serve. Students are constantly being held to an unrealistic participation level that can be harmful to mentally and physically disabled students. For example, PE is required without a 504 or an IEP and students can be marked down for not participating in classes on one day when they feel bad. Furthermore, trigger warnings and content warnings need to be required and normalized as common practice for teachers. While we do sometimes see this, it is uncommon to see warnings or preparation for such things as homophobia, racism, transphobia, antisemitism and more. This can be damaging to the goal of creating a space for all students to learn.
When students miss more than one day of school, whether it is from mental stress or physical problems, it can be incredibly difficult to catch up. Students can miss school due to hospitalizations and when returning to school have little support from their teachers or counselors in both catching up and maintaining the current coursework and sometimes counselors have literally given up on students. It is a graduation requirement to attend a certain amount of days, no matter if the teach, if the students can keep up in their classes.
Many of these issues could be solved for individual students through an IEP or 504 plan, but these are often difficult to obtain. Without a diagnosis or strong support structure in their life, students who may need an IEP or 504 plan never get one. And oftentimes, students who do not have an IEP or 504 plan are viewed as mentally and physically able to accomplish classwork easily, when this is not the case. We must acknowledge that for a lot of students, it is hard for them to access the healthcare necessary to get a diagnosis. You must create an easier path for students to attain specialized education plans and stop assuming all students without them are neurotypical and able-bodied.
Overall, ableism is rarely addressed in Portland Public Schools. Many students and staff still use ableist slurs or language and face no accountability measures. Current practices violate Portland Public Schools' non-discrimination policy. Students are missing school and even dropping out because of the lack of structure around accommodating all levels of mental and physical ability. Disabled students deserve just as much as education as anyone else and should not be penalized for our struggles. This needs to be addressed now. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so hopefully you will transmit all of that testimony from each of you and, um, we can, we're gonna hear a little bit more from Alima about how she and Supersac have begun to work with you, I hope. Um, and, you know, we'll work with Alima as far as attending Supersac or whatever kind of venue we, um, wanna come up with to go through the questions that you've raised and the issues that you've raised. It was incredibly comprehensive and thank you so much for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Now, on to our public comment. Ms. Houston, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
We have nine signed up. And our first speaker is Senator Lou Frederick.
Here he is.
Hello.
Hello, good evening.
I'm Lou Frederick, uh, state senator for this district here. Unfortunately, I'm not coming with, um, pleasant news. Uh, I wanted you to know and I wanted to at least have it recognized that, um, one of your former colleagues, Sue Hagmeyer, died about two weeks ago. Uh, she saw herself and enjoyed being on this Portland School Board, felt that it was one of the major efforts of her life. Um, she was my, that, one of my best friends and, uh, and colleague and, and chief of staff in Salem. And we spent a great deal of time, uh, discussing what we might see as the future in terms of education. And I wanted to at least read a little thing that gives a sense of some of her approaches. We spent every morning and evening driving back and forth to Salem and we would often talk about, um, schools and what we wanted to see happen with schools. And I will just, I'm go- I've, I can go into a whole series of things that we've, that we've done, but I wanted to just read a couple of things that she put together for me and I thought it would be appropriate. Uh, because we always talked about, um, some of the, the words and phrases that were used and you've hea- you heard them a lot. Uh, outcomes, you've never heard of those things. No one's, no one mentions that, I'm sure. Says, "We hear a lot about outcomes in education planning. The trouble is we do a terrible job of defining outcomes and we allow that buzzword to divert our attention from inputs." Now, if you're going, growing tomatoes, you want a good outcome, but it's not magic. It doesn't happen because you keep measuring the plants. In fact, you can have indications that your outcomes are going to be all good all along the way and then find out at the end of the summer that you've grown huge plants with no tomatoes. That's because your, your inputs weren't the right ones for producing fruit. Tomatoes need light, warmth, fertilizer, pruning and water for good outcomes. And growing children need stimulation, wonder and excitement, as well as educational content for good outcomes. If we don't fol- focus on high-quality inputs, we're going to be disappointed in our outcomes, no matter what those test scores look like. If the outcome we seek is an innovative and resilient economy and a vibrant and functioning sc- cultural civic and cultural life, then what do the test scores and tests themselves have to do with it and what do the inputs we're settling for now have to do with it? Those are the questions. If you ask and answer those questions adequately for all kids, then we will have a comprehensive education. We will have a next generation. Uh, flexible enough to take on a s- future, sorry, on a future that we cannot imagine with individual tools and skills to work with others and make that future better than we can now imagine. Those are the kinds of, that's the kind of language that she was involved with. It's the kind of thing that I continue to try to push for as I work, uh, in this, in the legislature. But I wanted to come here and at least acknowledge that this was one of the basic places for her life. Uh, as she tried to make things, she started off as a tag mom, actually, she started off as a student at Smith Elementary School and a graduate of Jackson High School and then became a tag mother and, um, decided that she was gonna run for the school board in nineteen ninety-five and won and served two terms on this board and one, uh, one term as, uh, as the chair. It was something she loved. So thank you. I just wanted to bring that forward. Thank you.
Next, we have Gabrielle Mercedes Bolivar and Alessia Bordio.
They are separate presenters.
Correct.
Good evening. My name is Gabrielle Mercedes Bolivar. Good evening Superintendent McCain, PBS Board of Education and Student Rep- Representative Ms. Bradley. Right now, what's giving me hope is all of our wonderful and amazing students. Tonight, I'm here to continue to advocate for equitable access to opportunities for all of our students regardless of socioeconomic status. We understand our next superintendent will bear the brunt of addressing the historic inequities of middle grades programming, instructional minutes, program co-location, the opportunity gap for our historically underserved students, including students receiving special education services, district-wide band review and review of educational opportunities, including focus option and alternative education programs. That is a lot, right? However, we have more. PIL sports and activities is a pathway for many students to find a supportive community that promotes health and can even lead to post-secondary educational opportunities and scholarships. However, there continues to be a significant income divide in PPS that limits student access and participation in PPS PIL activities. access and participation in PPS PIL activities. Here is one example. Jefferson PIL Track and Field for Middle School Students begins the new season on March sixteenth. One requirement to participate is a fee of one hundred fifty dollars per child, or sixty per child if qualified for free or reduced lunch. A second requirement is transportation to Jefferson High School or practices will be held and transportation home. This creates an access inequity. For many families, including mine, with two middle school students participating, these fees are a hardship. I hear from students that want to participate but don't have access to the reduced sixty-dollar participation fee. Many won't ask their parent or guardian, knowing that the money simply isn't there. This results in inequitable access to opportunity. When you watch the PIL competitions and see the number of PPS students representing a middle school cluster community, it becomes self-evident that socioeconomics has a direct impact on equitable access to this opportunity. Address a neighborhood school continues to impact equitable access to activities in PPS. These fees are a significant barrier. We do have student successes to celebrate, however. Jefferson Middle College for Advanced Studies is one example. The equity allocation that provides staff with additional planning time and advisory time for students, the culturally responsive SCI programming, and time, and the PCC partnership have directly impacted equitable access to opportunity at Jefferson. This has resulted in many student successes and closing the achievement gap for some of our historically underserved students. African-American and Hispanic-Latino students achieved a nearly eighty-nine percent and eighty-four percent graduation rate respectively. PPS needs to look critically at this data and define causation. This should include cultural competence, access to culturally responsive programming and partnerships like SCI. Size matters in schools with majority historically underserved students. A small student population provides more meaningful opportunities for relationship building with teachers, support staff, and administration. Rigor. Equitable access to advanced classes at PCC for college credit does matter. Dollars. Equity allocation impacts on staff planning time and student advising time. I provided a grid in your packet that you see with the information. We still have work to do at Jefferson. A few data points include a fifty percent graduation rate for limited English proficient students, a twenty percent graduation rate gap between all female students versus male students at Jefferson, eighty-nine percent female students to sixty-nine percent male students respectively, and Asian student graduation rate at thirty-three percent. Let's celebrate our success at Jefferson and continue to invest in culturally responsive partnerships and collaboration to close the opportunity gap for all students. Together, we are better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dear ladies and gentlemen of the school board, the teachers of the Russian immersion program at Kelly Elementary are proud to be a part of the Portland Public Schools' national leadership role in promoting dual-language immersion in public schools. In particular, we're the strongest supporters of PPS's commitment to close the achievement gap for historically underserved students. While many programs in neighboring schools districts have programs for the most common foreign languages like Spanish, what distinguishes PPS and allows it to take a leadership role in dual-language immersion and supporting underserved students is its support for a variety of less commonly taught languages. For example, although the US Department, State Department considers Russian to be a critical needs language, the PPS Russian DLI is one of only three public K through twelve programs nationwide. The recent decision of the Department of Dual Language to shift to only one Russian immersion strand threatens to weaken PPS's commitment to DLI and support for historically underserved students. The Department of Dual Language alleges that there is a lack of interest of PPS residents in the program, that the high percentage of out-of-district applicants are a net drain on the PPS budget, and that enrollment has fallen to unsustainable levels. These allegations are simply not true, and acting on them by eliminating a strand of the Russian immersion program undermines the district's commitment to equity and equens, weakens its ability to, quote, "prepare every student to navigate and compete in a culturally rich society and global economy," end of quote. Cultural richness will not be enhanced by expanding other immersion programs at the cost of a strand of the unique Russian immersion program. A recent study conducted by PSU and the Coalition of Communities of Color about the Slavic community in Multnomah County found that the Slavic community is threatened by its invisibility and marginalization. The Slavic community is invisible in traditional demographics since they are considered white, although the study finds the community faces similar forms of discrimination and exclusion as other communities of color. This underserved disadvantaged community, however, faces an additional obstacle that other communities of color do not face: the widespread disregard and disbelief that they are even a legitimate minority. This experience has deepened an already pronounced district of the school dis, of the school system. Specifically, every year, this already marginalized community deals not only with uncertainty around a continued equitable access to the program, but also to concerns about whether the program will continue at all. Closing one strand sends the unsettling message that the Slavic minority is not welcomed, not worthy of inclusion in Portland public schools. Keeping both strands of and continuing open enrollment in, the Russian immersion program would go a long way in mending this distrust.
Excuse me.
Yes.
I'm gonna need to ask you to wrap it up, and we have your full testimony here.
Okay.
Written, and then we have several other speakers on your same topic, so.
Okay, I understand. All right, I will, we had some other speakers who had extra time.
Yeah, no, that would be great. Send up. Everyone, we have several other people.
Can I finish my testimony?
Oh, who, sure, yeah.
Okay. In two thousand seven, the Russian DLI was established at Kelly Elementary in the furthest corner of southeast Portland, only about a mile from both the Davis-Douglas and North Clackamas School Districts. In two thousand eleven, with the rationale of making the program sustainable in middle and high school, it was expanded to a second strand. When the program was opened, the DLI Department's promotion strategy focused on Russian churches, many of which are located out of districts, and congregants located out of district were encouraged to attend. More recently, the DLI Department says it has purchased radio advertisements on Russian-language radio stations that, due to religious content, appeal primarily to religious groups. Meanwhile, parents and teachers have been asking for district support in advertising the program, for instance, by noting on the Kelly Elementary School sign that it is the home of the Russian immersion program. Even simpler would be to improve the Kelly Elementary School website, and yet nothing has been done. Unlike other PPS immersion school, schools, Kelly's website does not mention that the Russian immersion program is located there, and doesn't provide information about district enrollment requirements or advanced deadlines for immersion programs. Likewise, it logically follows that the location of the program at the far edge of the PPS boundary would promote interest in the program nearby in other school districts and reduce interest from PPS residents living further away in downtown, southwest, or northeast Portland. Russian speakers are active in many walks of life and live in many parts of Portland. Primarily targeting only religious groups living in East Portland, besides reinforcing stereotypes of immigrant, immigrant communities and increasing their insularity, has limited opportunities for historically disadvantaged populations to connect with a more diverse community of Russian speakers, as well as with the broader multicultural community and economy of Portland. We ask the board to please consider whether it is really justified to claim a lack of interest in the program, given that the DLI Department has only poorly and haphazardly promoted the Russian DLI program and placed it at the furthest corner of the school district. The DLI Department also claimed it, admitting that the district spends more money specifically on Russian immersion, out-of-district students, than it receives in funding. No data was provided to support this assertion. According to Oregon state law, however, each student coming from a different school district receives funding from the state and is, quote, "considered a resident of the district in which the person attends school if the person receives written consent to attend school from the district school board where the school is located," end of quote. Furthermore, no transportation costs are incurred by the district since parents provide transportation for students. Also, additional funding is provided for ULL students. Finally, the Russian teachers at Kelly Elementary have developed their own Russian language curriculum, class materials, and translations with only minimum support from the district. As teachers of the Russian immersion program, we therefore find the assertion that the Russian immersion program is a particular drain on the district budget, absolutely lacking in credibility, and disrespectful of the financial and personal resources that teachers contribute to the program. Furthermore, contrary to DLI assertions in a recent letter to parents and teachers, enrollment in the program is not suffering at all. While the neighborhood kindergarten at Kelly Elementary has fourteen to seventeen students, the current two Russian immersion kindergarten classes have twenty students each. With proper promotion and a more central location, it stands to reason that the Russian immersion program could certainly support more strands and locations. Finally, the justifications of the DLI Department to close the second strand at Kelly Elementary are logically inconsistent. For example, in the letter to the Kelly community, DLI writes, quote, "Enrollment in the lower grades of our Russian immersion program has fallen to levels that will be difficult to sustain through higher grades." Not only is this not true, it also contradicts their other assertion in the same letter that, quote, "it would be better to resource small middle school classrooms that continue to have a second strand to students, of students that are from outside of district and exacerbate overcrowding at our school," end quote. The DLI Department would apparently have us believe that enrollment, enrollment in the Russian DLI is so low that it is causing overcrowding at Kelly Elementary. Not only that, by keeping the second strand is essential to sustain the program through middle and high school, not something that stands in opposition to it. While the DLI Department would like to forget about its inadequate promotion of the Russian program and close a strand with a vague, unproven assertion of lack of interest, we would like to ask the board to reject such a rash, ill-considered decision and instead to consider a professional, specific approach that would strengthen instead of weaken both the Russian DLI as well as PPS's commitment to educational equity. First, we would like to ask the board to consider keeping two strands at Kelly Elementary while working with DEBRAC on relocation options to a more central location. We would also like to request that the board creates a committee to consider relocation and promotion needs of the program. Such a move would make the program more accessible to a wider range of PPS residents, as well as give an underserved community an opportunity to be included in Portland's diverse economy and culture. Secondly, in recognition of the location of the program in the far southeast corner of the school district, please keep open enrollment for out-of-district students until the program can be relocated to a location that will be more accessible to most of the residents of the district. Third, we request equitable promotion of all immersion programs by including well-organized and easily accessible information on both the school and district websites, and by reaching out to families at connect to kindergarten events. We believe that closing the second strand of the Russian program is not going to create a more sustainable program, as the DLI asserts. On the contrary, this decision crushes the hopes of families and students to have a barrier-free learning environment where all students, regardless of race and ethnicity, have the opportunity to benefit equally.
Thank you. Thanks to you all for being here.
Next two speakers are Ina Apanasjuk and William Comer.
I think, is that who was with you, with the first speaker?
Yes. Is William Comer here?
Yes.
Ina and I are gonna go together, so is the order fixed, or can we ask William Comer? And then Ina and Tara.
So, I think, are we continuing with all of the speakers that we had originally planned?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we just deferred time for the first speaker to be able to present the whole materials that were given to us in writing? So, I'm not sure who that was that.
Alessia.
So, how come the six students were able to present their information, but we're being denied?
Go ahead. Please go ahead, thanks.
My name is William Comer. I'm an Associate Professor of Russian at Portland State University and Director of the Russian Language Flagship Program at the university. That is only one of four federally funded flagship programs in the United States, and over the past six years, that program has worked very closely with Portland Public Schools to support the dual-language immersion with Russian. We've carried out a number of grant-funded teacher training initiatives, and we have one yet coming up in mid-March. My concern in closing the second strand is that it may make the program unsustainable. And it's a great concern for the flagship program and for the Russian program at Portland State, because we are looking forward to the day when students graduate from the dual-language immersion program, following that maxim that the American Council on Teaching a Foreign Language has insisted upon, long sequences of learning of languages critical and difficult for English speakers over many years. And so, whatever we can do to actually support this program, to make sure that it is sustainable, draws from all segments of Portland, is something that we're interested in, and we are working together with the school district on teacher training projects and other projects, and really would like to see the viability of this, and to include all students in the Multnomah County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who's the next speaker after Ina?
That was William Comer. Just spoke.
So, Ina is here.
We will have Tana and Sam.
Is that with the same issue?
It is not.
So, Ina's here, and I can translate for Ina if needed.
Okay, that's great.
Hi, my name is Ina. I'm a parent of five kids, and three kids go Russian program.
And my name is, for the record, my name is Erin Meeksurf. I'm also a parent in the Russian immersion program. I'm gonna testify with Ina and translate her story, and then we'd like to give you a packet of letters from parents in the program, and over five hundred signatures that accompany our parent letter. Did you have it submitted already? We, we wrote one letter as parents, so that we wouldn't have to all testify in a row. So, we have a big packet, we have some folders with information, and we have one letter that I would like to read to you quickly after Ina's testimony.
That's fine.
Okay. Can, and Esther would like to give you the folders. Is that all right?
Is it okay?
Is it all right? I think we got them.
No, it's a matter of.
Sorry. Yes, so, and these are handwritten and typed parent letters for the public record.
Я жила в этом дистрике, и мой ребенок старший. Девочка пошла в русскую программу.
My oldest daughter entered the Russian immersion program when I lived in the Portland district.
На данный момент мой ребенок закончил Келли Медил. Сейчас, в данный момент, в high school.
My, this daughter's finished the program at Kelly and at Lane, and now she's in high school at Franklin.
На данный момент мой ребенок может свободно говорить на русском языке и на английском писать, грамматически и читать.
Right now, my daughter can read and write in English and in Russian, and she's doing really well academically.
Но через год пойдет мой самый маленький ребенок.
In a year, my youngest child will be going to kindergarten.
И мы сейчас, в данный момент, не в этом дистрике.
But at this time, we are not in the Portland Public District.
И когда урежут границы, я переживаю, и не только я, а здесь много присутствующих, которые переживают о том, что наши дети многие не попадут в эту программу.
So, when my daughter goes to kindergarten...
So, when my daughter goes to kindergarten, I'm worried that I won't be able to access this program that has been very good for her older sibling, and as you can see, many parents here have the same worry, that they won't be able to take advantage of this very, very high-quality good program.
Grammar and reading and literacy skills are part of the program, but also culture and their heritage.
So my request to you is to save this program and not diminish it, not decrease the enrollment because it's very important to us. Can I read the letter, speed read, from all the parents?
Do we have that letter? Do you have the letter?
That you want to read?
I'm gonna read.
Do we have it? Is that Ina?
I don't think so.
Okay, go ahead.
So, testimony to Portland Public School Board from the parents and families of the PPS Dual Language Russian Immersion Program, in total three hundred and eighteen Portland Public students. Please keep our immersion program strong by continuing open enrollment for at least two kindergarten classrooms. Reflecting on the earlier testimony and the PPS racial equity lens, which aims to produce more equitable outcomes by considering the following five questions. Who are the racial and ethnic groups affected by this policy program or practice or decision, and what are the potential impacts on these groups? Does this policy program, practice, or decision ignore or worsen existing disparities or produce other unintended consequences? Have you intentionally involved stakeholders who are also members of the communities affected by this policy program, practice, or decision? And can you validate your assessment of number one or number two? What are the barriers to more equitable outcomes, and how will you mitigate the negative impacts and address the barriers that are identified above? The parents and families in our community are very troubled by the recent news that PPS has decided without input from the families to reduce the incoming kindergarten enrollments to one classroom and are limiting enrollment based on district residents. There are more than enough families to fill two classrooms on the waiting list. PPS has been a champion of dual-language immersion programs and has so much to be proud of, including this unique dual-language Russian immersion program. The program began in two thousand and seven with one classroom, or one strand, and the second strand was opened in two thousand and eleven because of increased demand. The program was developed by Russian language faculty at Portland State University and exists among three such programs nationally. Since two thousand and seven, demand has only grown and not diminished. So, first, two kindergarten classrooms are critical, and you heard that from our teachers. Russian immersion was strategically opened at Kelly when Kelly had room to spare, but that's not the case anymore. It's overcrowded. I'm gonna read really fast through. You should know about dual-language programs, that student mobility is very different. Students may not join the program after K or first grade if they haven't had the immersion experience, and additionally, they may not leave and come back to an immersion program later. And so, we may not always have two classrooms at the higher levels, but two kindergarten classrooms are absolutely vital to the life and vitality of the program. We, parents, ask that you relocate our program to a more central location in PPS and make it perhaps a K eight. The Russian program was first hosted at Kelly when that looked like a good idea in terms of where the Slavic community lives. No longer the case. We brought our concerns to the DEBRAC group when they looked at redistricting, we talked about overcrowding at Kelly, and we didn't see any change in the program location then. There are five possibilities that we can see: Wilcox School at northeast Seventy-Fourth Avenue, Kellogg Middle School at Sixty-Second and Powell, Humboldt K eight at Ganton Vine, Smith Elementary at southwest Fifty-Second Avenue, or Rice School, which is partially offices on Tillamook Street. Russian could productively combined with, could be productively combined with any other language program or focus option. Losing this unique program is not an option for Portland Public Schools. By closing enrollment to out-of-district families, you're phasing it out, and that's really the truth. It will not survive. After years of careful and collective development, it will be a great loss for Portland, for Oregon, and for the United States. The kids in this program are our future diplomats. They're learning Russian, and they're learning it well, so this is important for our country right now. We ask that you change your decision because of the viability of the Russian dual-language program depends on a larger group of incoming kindergarteners. Sincerely, Esther Vey, the president of our parent association for the program at Kelly and Lane and Franklin. Thank you for hearing us out.
And we can answer any questions that you might have.
Just a quick one, did you, you mentioned the word waiting list? Is there a waiting list?
Yes.
Of how many, for the, for the two programs? In other, I mean, for the two classrooms? So how many people do you have signed up waiting for kindergarten? Do you have, when you said waiting list, that...
So, so there's been a waiting list in previous years, and because of the complicated inter-district enrollment, the waiting list exists up until August when all Portland families have been able to sign up. So the Portland District would have a lottery, since as far as I understand it. Then out-of-district could take up any empty classroom seats that are left. So if the Portland-wide lottery fills only one classroom, there might be one seat that could be filled by the waiting list. So, for example, the estimates that I heard were, say, there's eighteen students from Portland that want to go to kindergarten, and fifty or sixty students from out-of-district that want to go to this program.
So, I have a question, are you advocating with other districts to start new programs?
I'm a Portland Public parent, I'm advocating with you, and I don't, I've heard that idea before, and I'm not sure it's viable because if it hasn't already happened, it's not likely to happen. I think our connection with Portland State University and Portland Public Schools keeps this program very strong.
How many immersion programs did you say were in the country?
In Russian?
Total?
Three.
Total?
One in Alaska, one in Woodburn, Oregon, and one here in Portland.
Might be nice to have some people in this country that can speak Russian in the future.
Agreed. Thank you very much. Thank you for your question.
Our next two speakers are Lisa Zuniga and Rajiv Ali.
Portland Public used to offer Russian to high school students. I learned Russian at Lincoln, class of eighty-one, no cards. I'm a South teacher at Kelly, and it's the best school I've had in my career, partially because of the Russian community and also the non-Russian community. They're all our kids, we're all Kelly Fuders. Please keep us together.
Welcome.
Good evening. Lisa Zuniga, Z-U-N-I-G-A, three minutes. After watching the public testimony from last week's board meeting regarding the Japanese immersion programs...
Give it a sec, yeah, give it a sec.
I can't tell if this is on.
I think it's on.
All right, here I go. After watching the public testimony from last week's board meeting regarding the Japanese immersion program's annual two-week trip abroad, I felt compelled to clarify for the record that the issues raised regarding this trip pertain only to the negative impact on non-Japanese immersion students at Mount Taber Middle School. This complaint is about when the trip takes place, not that it takes place. This isn't about dismantling the JMP program or questioning the quality of the travel experience, but rather to ensure that students in other programs don't continue to bear the brunt of this one group's privilege. As I participated in the stakeholder meetings regarding the issues surrounding this trip, I've been reminded of how ten years ago, the Richmond Elementary Neighborhood Program was slated to be closed due to enrollment attrition. The neighborhood program was dying because who wants to subject their child to the less-than experience in a school that has one group quite literally ramping up on enrichments thanks to program fundraising and expectations? Those parents successfully appealed to the district to redraw boundaries so their students could attend nearby neighborhood schools instead. The unintended consequence is that the immersion program grew unchecked and unbalanced. Somehow, the JMP ended up with a demographic that was only four percent free and reduced lunch at one point. Last I checked, it was nine percent. I know focused schools struggle to attract a broad demographic, that's another issue. What PPS can manage is to do away with any negative impact focused programs have on other student populations. This year's trip to Japan is scheduled to take place in April. This goes directly against board policy, which strongly discourages travel study programs during school time. One language arts class at Mount Taber will be reduced to a pitiful five students for two weeks. I wonder what it feels like to know your peers are on the trip of a lifetime while you prepare for what Mount Taber offers as your eighth-grade capstone. Students enrolled in the neighborhood program wrap up by giving a brief presentation on a topic of their choosing. PPS never sends them off campus, much less out of the country, to further their research. This is an equity issue. A parent complaint resulted in a commitment to stop the practice of inviting teachers to serve as chaperones, a boondoggle that left non-JMP students supervised by subs. The immersion department also stopped the practice of taking an administrator out of a school, realizing it was unsafe and unwise to leave one behind to manage alone. What you might not realize is that the creep of inequities will now extend to central office, which must decide which two administrative directors can walk away from their job in order to chaperon staff and students in Japan. Moving this trip outside of the school year resolves every issue raised. Are logistics more challenging? Probably, but logistics are solvable problems. Closing the achievement gap between historically underserved students, that's a much stickier and more pressing issue, and that's where our resources should be expended. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you. Rajiv Ali.
Good evening, board members. My name is Sam Gola, and on behalf of Equity and Contracting Committee, we are here to present, first of all, to present ourselves. It's a board that was created by, a committee that was created by the purchasing group to ensure that there's fairness in contracting. We, it's not strange, you heard about equity all night long in academics, we're gonna talk about equity in contracting. We've noticed, looking at your spreadsheet, first of all, I must say, my group is consisting of engineers and architects and city planners. I'm a city planner, he's an engineer. We have presented a document to you, it contains a full information of what we, we're gonna just summarize here for you tonight. We are looking at your contracting services. We thank you for creating the purchasing group or empowering them to help us create this group that will ensure that we have fairness in contracting. We are about six-member group, we work with your purchasing group. Occasionally, your CEO and your CFO come to the meetings because we want to make sure that they are listening to what we have to say. And that process continues tonight. We are here to make sure that you hear what we have to say, and most of our information is contained here. It consists of three, three key bulletin, minority issues in terms of contracting, our work issues, and the key things that we're gonna talk about tonight is bond, we support your bond. We see what the bond is doing out there, it's building new schools, it's creating a healthy environment, wish we had a spotlight here to make it more environmental friendly. We can do that for you if you want to give us the contract. We think it will, those things will help us, but we also notice that most of the contracts tend to go to big-name contractors, people that are already established, they are upcoming people, and we also notice that disabled services of people are part of this group. They need services, they need contract, and we can work together by seeing you today, by presenting what we do, that you, we applaud what the purchasing people are doing, we ask that you support them in what they're doing, we ask that you support your CFO in what they're doing with contracting. There's inequities, we're not gonna sit here and elaborate on inequities. We want to thank you for helping to create this, and I'm gonna turn off to Rajiv, and he'll continue from here.
Hello, board members. My name is Rajiv Ali, and I'm the owner of Line One Engineering. So, I'm concerned with the infrastructure.
Please, excuse me, please speak up just a bit, it's hard for us to hear. Thank you.
So I'm, I'm concerned with the infrastructure of the schools, not only the schools, the highways, the railways in this country. So, I've been involved with many projects with Portland Public Schools over the last five years, and I have been to many of your facilities, and by talking to the project managers, it appears that the average age of these schools is like sixty or seventy years, and that requires a lot more of infrastructure improvements, upgrades. Seismic upgrades is a big item that needs to be addressed in all these schools. So we, the Equity and Contracting Committee was created by the Purchasing and Contracting Group at the Portland Public School about two years ago, because it was realized, looking at the data, that the contracts, like Sam mentioned, were not going to the local community, the minority women, emerging small businesses, and the surface disabled veterans-owned companies. Now, as we sit here, the schools, the purpose of the school is to educate our kids, that they are our future. But at the same time, through your construction programs, your bond programs, you provide a lot of opportunities, employment opportunities, for the parents of those same kids. And if you consider the demographics of this town or this city, and we look at the companies which are owned by the minority women, emerging small businesses, these folks are part of the community. So those contracts that you spend your money on is utilized in this community, and they are not going out of this particular city or this state. So I would urge you to support the ECAC community through Portland Public Schools, and since the two years that we have been in existence, we have helped the project managers, the purchasing and contracting groups, by pointing out the disparities, the ways that they can increase the utilization of the MWESB firms, and help us all grow together, not only as the students, but also as the parents of those students. And I personally have worked with your carrier folks to provide, you know, mock interviews to your students to, you know, to show them the carriers that can be had in engineering and construction. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you, everyone. All right, now Ms. Bradley, students report.
I'm gonna read this, I'm sorry, I don't have it memorized, so I'm gonna look down the whole time. But, "Thank you to my fellow student organizers for articulating the urgency of the student body, and all of our schools are feeling around issues that they stated earlier today. I would like to go on the record, as a student representative to this board, as supporting all of their demands. One, remember, we must require student and staff equity teams in all middle and high schools, and we should create a district-wide initiative to increase racial awareness through those student and staff equity teams. Two, every school must have an inclusive and accessible locker and bathroom, bathrooms and locker rooms. Trainings with teachers around understanding different genders, the idea of gender versus sex, and inclusive practices is essential. We should use more gender..." schools, and we should create a district-wide initiative to increase racial awareness through those student and staff equity teams. Two, every school must have an inclusive and accessible locker and bathroom, bathrooms and locker rooms. Trainings with teachers around understanding different genders, the idea of gender versus sex, and inclusive practices is essential. We should use more gender options on all of our documents and add pronouns to attendance sheets. Three, we must take meaningful steps to increase the diversity of our district staff. Four, our sexual education curriculum needs to be more inclusive of LGBT plus students and must become more intentional about contraceptive use and how to access it. And we need to evaluate our mental health services and how students access them. Five, we must be willing to do more to protect undocumented students. Simply delaying, delaying immigration investigations is not enough. Six, we must not push a lack, our lack of ADA compliance to the end of our health and safety priorities. Along with all of those demands, I would like us to address our school funding disparities. We cannot continue to allow school-based funding, um, school-based fundraising to fund salaries for teachers. We know it creates inequities, and it's time to end that. And while students are very excited to hope past this upcoming bond, many are concerned about how the distribution of spending dollars for lead mitigation will be prioritized. Once we pass the bond and are ready to have that conversation, I'm confident the board will include students in that process. I challenge us as a board, moving forward, to take these demands to heart. These are the student priorities, basically. They should be used as guiding principles for this upcoming budget and work we will do with whoever we confirm as our new superintendent. Super SAC is prepared to work with PSAN, considering many of our members intersect, to help see their demands through. So, thank you all for allowing them to continue through their testimony, because I think all of those topics are very important, and they did a really good job presenting them. So, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks, Salima.
And they will be sending an email through with all of their contact information because each kid who presented specifically cares very deeply about that issue and want to work with you guys on those. So, they will be sending an email with their contact information and a copy of their demands. So, thank you.
Great. And we'll look to you to help us respond to a lot of the questions and work through Super SAC on each of those issues.
They're prepared to do that. We've had that conversation, so.
Great.
Is there somebody in Super SAC that brings these issues forward? I mean, this is a terrific job that they did. I mean, they really hit the issues, which aren't necessarily the ones that are wandering around at my house, so to speak. But do, I mean, is there, who, who are you working with at Super SAC?
Well, some of those kids who presented are members of Super SAC.
Right.
But that was Portland Student Action Network as an organization deciding that they were going to come in and do that testimony. But for me...
But do you have somebody at Super SAC? Who is your contact in the school district?
Oh, Kim Fox Middleton, who actually, Kim, I love you. It's Friday, it's her last day, and we really appreciate all the work that you've done with us, and you did an incredible job, and we love you very much. So, we're going to figure out who that will be.
Is she the person who brings forward student concerns?
She's one...
We've got her, but Kim Middleton?
Yeah, she's the one that works with Ali.
But it's, it's not her job to, it's mine.
It's your job only. Well, I would think that we would want someone who was in the administration too, that you could contact, to bring a lot of those concerns forward also, to help bring them and put them together and to help you in some manner doing that.
I mean, in the future, I think...
It'd be somebody, it'd be nice to have somebody in the district whose job was to listen to student concerns and make sure they were.
Yeah. I think, I think that's what Super SAC is supposed to do, and I think moving forward, our next steps is to contact whoever in the district is in charge of whatever the concern is and call them and move, move forward from there, so.
Great. I appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Salima. Okay. Superintendent McCain, would you like to provide your report?
Well, certainly. Good evening, directors, and good evening, folks out there in, I guess, television land and here in our audience. I want to thank the Hostford Middle School Band and its director, Scott Johnston, for providing the outstanding music that we have this evening. These performances remind us why we're all here. It's, it's for the kids and to serve them, and it's always beautiful to see young people perform. Okay, snow days. I want to be sure I'm in the right order here. I was shuffling my papers and I all of a sudden got lost. This winter has, has been a tough one for Portland Public Schools. Students lost nine instructional days, four in December, five in January. The board has already voted to push the last day of school to Wednesday, June 14, and all originally scheduled late openings and early releases have been converted back to instructional time. The board, if the board approves a recent memorandum of understanding with the Portland Association of Teachers, the school calendar will be adjusted to make up 6.5 days for the K-8 students, six days for the ninth grade through 11th grade students, and two days for the high school seniors. Most of you will be happy to know that we will not be canceling spring break or Memorial Day, and we will keep you informed of any other calendar adjustments. Nine PPS schools won recognition by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency for achieving Energy Star certification. And I was present for the, am I in the picture there somewhere? Look for a bald head, etcetera. Anyway, to, to receive this certification, a building must perform in the top 25% of similar, similar facilities nationwide for energy efficiency and meet strict energy efficiency performance levels set by the EPA. Energy Star schools use an average of 35% less energy and also release 35% less carbon dioxide. To meet those standards, the schools have done a number of things, including installing direct digital controls, which save energy by remotely controlling heating and ventilation in separate sections of schools, replacing steam valves and steam pipes, or steam traps, rather, insulating hot water pipes, upgrading to more efficient lighting systems and controls. The PPS schools earned, earning the rating are Benson Polytechnic High School, Wilson High School, Cleveland High School, Stevenson Elementary School, Chapman Elementary School, James John Elementary School, Chief Joseph, Chief Joseph Elementary School, Sunnyside Environmental K-8, and Richmond Elementary School. Congratulations to them all and to our Facilities Maintenance Department that helped make this recognition possible. And I believe I saw in the presentation notes that I gave at, at the awards that was saving something like $500,000 annually. I believe it was quite a lot.
In those nine schools?
Uh, yes. That is correct.
If we did that across the district, we might save several million dollars.
Well, we could save a lot. That's true.
Are, are there plans to put forward to do that?
Well, as I understand, there's some of that would take place in, you know, with the bond and also with the upgrades that we're doing, health and safety and the like, so.
But I mean, there's a, these guys had a special plan at each school, right?
Yeah, I, you know, again, I, the facilities folks are probably better...
They're not here, well, oriented to answer that question. Yusef is not here, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Might be something to look into, I would think.
Well, I'm, I'm fairly certain that, that this is not, these aren't one-offs. I'm pretty sure this is the district plan, so. But I can verify that and get back to you.
Hard to say.
Okay, the Grant Constitution Team, uh, uh, once, once again, Grant's High School Constitution Team took the state title at the Oregon We the People Competition last month. Victory is a habit with Grant's team. In its, in its 17th year of existence, the students have won the state title 11 times, gone to nationals 12 times, and won two national championships. For the past nine years, Grant and Lincoln High School teams have alternated winning the state championship. Grant team goes on to the National We the People Competition in Washington, D.C. in April. Congratulations to the team. It's coach Jeremy Reinhold, and best of luck next month in D.C. Benson Tech Show. The Benson High School recently held its 37th, I almost said 37th, 97th Annual Tech Show, where Benson students displayed projects they've completed through school's renowned career technical education program. CTE provides students cutting-edge technical classes that prepare them for post-secondary school opportunities and high-demand jobs. Benson is a focus option high school and is open to PPS students across the district. And I would just add to this that I attended the, the, the technical show and was shown around by the principal and was, really gained a, a much deeper insight into the quality that Benson provides for our students. It really is quite an amazing program, and I noticed that Director Anthony was there and, and very much engaged as well. Lincoln High School Mission Citizen Program. Mission Citizen is a nonprofit run entirely by students of Lincoln High School. It teaches naturalize, naturalization classes and provides scholarships for hundreds of immigrants annually in the Portland metropolitan area to take the United States Naturalization Exam. Mission Citizen recently received $49,970 a grant from State Farm Youth Advisory Board that will fund a tablet-based educational initiative, a TriMet advertising campaign for the program, and also expanded its scholarship fund to fivefold. Mission Citizen was only one, was one of only three selected out of nearly 100 applicants in the Pacific Northwest to receive such a grant. Very, very interesting and wonderful work.
Yes, yeah.
On behalf of the Youth Advisory Board and State Farm Insurance, we'd like to present you with this grant for $49,970 to Mission Citizen. Thank you.
What happened was a representative from State Farm actually came and presented us with a check for the amount of money that was requested in the grant that we applied for back in April.
Only U.S. citizens have the responsibility to vote in a federal election, and only citizens serve on a jury when called upon.
Basically, we're here at the Gresham Library, and this is one of our weekly classes. So, Mission Citizen teaches classes at three locations across the city. About a third of it is going toward a fleet of iPad minis that we're going to be implementing into the class because we've oftentimes found that there were language barriers with our students. Another third is going toward advertising on TriMet, you know, bus benches inside buses, et cetera. And then the final third goes toward our scholarship fund, which helps pay $275 to each student that completes our course, and that serves to help offset the really expensive $725 naturalization fee that every immigrant must pay if they want to gain citizenship.
They're doing a great job, and they're, they should keep doing it for others to come and learn like I, I am learning right now.
I think the biggest thing for our team is to recognize that the work that we do in school can be applied elsewhere. But it's also really personal, and you get to be here, and you get to teach, and you get to have these one-on-one interactions with people who are trying to become a more prominent member of the community, and it's exactly what we're striving for.
It means everything to me because I, as soon as I, I stepped in this country, I, I told myself that I was going to learn the language and I was going to do whatever it takes to be here because it's a great country.
Just another, just another reemphasis for me personally of, of all the good things that go on in Portland Public Schools that are never reported, as, as opposed to the few things that we are struggling with and are continuing to try to improve. It's a wonderful program, and it's just outstanding that, that is going on. Portland Public Schools Bravo Youth Orchestras have garnered a number of positive accolades over the years. The orchestras are at four of our schools, Caesar Chavez, Rosa Parks and Sitten Elementary Schools, and George Middle School. Recently, Sitten's orchestra performed with the Oregon Symphony, and last week, NBC Nightly News came to Portland to profile the Bravo music program in our schools. Let's take a look at that.
They practiced like this for hours, little hands honing their craft.
It's exciting. I'm the first violinist in my family.
Twelve-year-old Luis Chan Hernandez says the violin is changing the tone of his life.
It's nice.
And at his home in North Portland, you can already hear the difference.
He was just, you know, following kids that were getting in trouble. It really changed him, turned him around, more confident.
Tell us a little bit.
Luis is one of 40 students at Portland's George Middle School, playing in the Bravo Youth Orchestra.
More basses.
It's a nonprofit program serving more than 100 students in four of the city's poorest schools, where music education didn't exist.
Your turn.
Our goal is to create social change through music, so music is the tool.
The budding musicians practice together at least two hours after school, five days a week, building to at least 20 public performances a year.
It somewhat has given us an identity here in North Portland.
And it's raising the bar at school. District officials say across the board, reading and math test scores are higher for Bravo students. Last year, of the nearly 40 suspensions in schools with the Bravo program, only one of them was an orchestra participant.
Why does music help you?
Because sometimes it relaxes me, and sometimes it helps me in math. I'm learning more stuff than just school.
Seeing those kids struggle, but in the end come out and persevere is amazing.
For Luis, it's a source of pride.
Like, at the end, I'm still shaking, but at the same time, I accomplish something for my family, like to let everybody know that, like, this is who I am.
Music with a purpose, showing young minds that anything is possible, no matter what note you start on. Steve Patterson, NBC News, Portland.
Is Chris Russo here? Chris, would you come down and sit down front for just a moment? We, we want to know a few things. We, this is bittersweet news. As you all know, on the directors, and now I'm going to share with everyone out there if they haven't read the Oregonian. Chris will be leaving us at the end of the school year. He approached me this fall and said that he might have an opportunity to do something he's dreamt about for a really long time. And then I think it was around December that he interviewed for the position, and will be, as of the fall of next year, he'll be the Director General of the American School of Asuncion in Paraguay. We will miss Mr. Russo greatly. He is an outstanding educator, and I just want to know if, if he's got some kind of a uniform as the general.
There is a uniform, yes.
Anyway, you deserve a round of applause. And so...
Thank you.
To read more about the great things going on in Portland Public Schools, I strongly encourage you to read PPS Pulse. It's our monthly online magazine highlighting the district's people and activities. It has great articles and beautiful photos. Our communications staff works on it hard, and it's well worth your time. The March edition of Pulse will be published sometime this week. It's well worth your time to take a look. Ooh, and there's a picture of moi. I, I had a great time, by the way, at that, the International Youth Leadership Conference. That's something that we should have had in here as night as well, and I know, Mike, you were there. It was, it was really humbling. I stood just for a moment in that group right there. I taught, I asked the students what their, their background was, and there was a young woman from Ethiopia, one from Eritrea, one from Central African Republic, and one from Somalia. So, I mean, it was just in that one small group, representing significant different countries, and it was really an amazing event. So, again, it's something to be very proud of as the people at our Portland Public Schools. Thank you. And now, is this something, are we doing a tree planting, too? I missed that one. Okay, all right. And now, I have the great honor of introducing Sean Murray to our Chief Human Resources Officer, and he's got something he would like to do.
Good evening, board members. Superintendent McCain, I'm Sean Murray, Chief Human Resources Officer. So, this evening, I have the pleasure of introducing our nominees for classified and nonrepresented Appreciation Week employees. Due to the length of this evening's board meeting, some of our nonrepresented and classified employees had to leave, but we appreciate the work that they do, and we will recognize them as well. So, this year, we received over 330 nominations for employees of our nonrepresented and classified staff. We worked with our union partners in terms of selecting nominees, and it was very difficult this year due to the outstanding work that our nonrepresented and classified employees do every day for Portland Public Schools. So that you know, each honoree will receive a crystal paperweight inscribed with the PPS logo and the words "outstanding achievement." Each honoree will also receive copies of the nomination submitted on their behalf and a copy of the school board resolution recognizing classified and nonrepresented Appreciation Week. Now, as I call individuals up, I will ask that you please step forward and receive your award from the superintendent and the board members, and take a moment to take a picture. So, board members, would you please stand up and come forward? All right. And you have to hand them a gift basket. All right, our first nominee is... All right, our first nominee is Daniel Alcantara, SSI, Support Representative, Information Technology. Well, shake each board member's hand. Next, we have Lynn Falconberry, Contract Analyst, Purchasing Contractor. Yes, thank you. She's a natural. Next nominee is Jenny Johnson, Music Instrument Repair Technician, Maintenance Services. All right, thank you. Our next nominee is Amy Liu, Principal Secretary, HOSFIR. Our next nominee is Shannon Meisner, Principal Secretary, LANE. All right, thank you. Our next nominee is Maria Magura, Educational Assistant, ESL, SCOT. Our next nominee is Barbara Rogers, Bus Driver, Dispatcher, Student Service. Our next nominee is Samantha Ruprosinga, Paraeducator, Markham. And then our last nominee, who is here this evening, is Mary Williams, Occupational Therapist, Special Education Services. I also want to take the opportunity to recognize the nominees who couldn't be here this evening or had to leave early. Jabar Abdou Kadir, Custodian, Oakley Green. Dean Bushnell, Custodian, Amesworth. Kristen Hawkinsdater, Principal Secretary, Aster. Also Cheryl Tompkins, Paraeducator for the Blind, Wilcox. And Candy Marks, Lead Food Services Assistant, Marysville. Please join me in congratulating them. All right, thank you.
Superintendent, did you want to read our resolution? In a minute, Tom. Resolution 5411?
Yes, I do. Resolution, Resolution 5411, Resolution to Recognize Classified and Nonrepresented Employee Appreciation Week, March 6th through 10th, 2017. Portland Public Schools classified and nonrepresented employees are essential members of our educational team. From the moment a student steps on a school bus each weekday morning, their learning experience is shaped by members of our classified and nonrepresented staff. On the front lines and behind the scenes, the men and women of our classified and nonrepresented staff are in a unique position to influence our school communities. They create a positive learning environment for our students by assisting them in the classroom, preparing and serving meals, caring for their physical needs, transporting them, keeping them safe, and aiding their families. Classified and nonrepresented staff keep our administrative and school offices humming, attend to our buildings and grounds, help us to communicate with each other and our community. Shepherd supplies and equipment, and because of this vital and integral role, we are grateful for their work and support. B, the Board of Education for Portland Public Schools acknowledges and applauds Portland Public Schools' assistive tech practitioners, attendance monitors, book clerks, bookkeepers, bus drivers, campus monitors, clerks, community agents, CNAs, custodians, educational assistants, that's ESL Head Start and General Ed, food service assistants, instructional technician, technical staff assistants, library assistants, licensed physical therapists, certified occupational therapy assistants, maintenance workers, nutrition services, orthopedic equipment techs, occupational and physical therapists, paraeducators, special education, secretaries, security techs, sign language interpreters, transportation route schedulers, analysts, associates, coordinators, functional leads, developers, advocates, evaluators, photojournalists, supervisors, technicians, and specialists and senior specialists, and more numerous to mention. C, for their efforts on behalf of the more than 49,000 students in the Portland Public Schools community, classified and nonrepresented employees deserve our collective recognition and thanks. Resolution, one, be it resolved that the Board of Education declares March 6th through 10th, 2017, Classified and Nonrepresented Employees Appreciation Week, in recognition of the many daily services provided to enrich and support students in Portland Public Schools toward their highest achievement possible. Two, be it further resolved that the Board encourages the Portland Public Schools community to join in honoring classified and nonrepresented employees for their impact on our students and our community.
Thank you. You'll now vote on Resolution 5411, a resolution to recognize classified and nonrepresented employee appreciation week. This week of March 6th. Do I have a motion? Director, do I have a second? Director Anthony moves, and Director Sparza Brown seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 5411. Ms. Houston, is there any comment on this resolution?
There is not.
Is there any board discussion on this resolution?
Thank you, yeah, big thank you.
A big thank you, and it was great to hear that list of all the different roles that these incredibly valuable employees play within the district. The Board will now vote on Resolution 5411. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Any abstentions? Resolution 54, is, 5411 is approved by a vote of six to zero, with Student Representative Bradley voting yes. Great, thank you very much. Thank you all for being here. All right, we will move on to the quarterly report of our Bond Accountability Committee. Tonight, we will receive our update from the Bond Committee. Superintendent McCain, would you like to introduce this topic? Or we can just
We can just move right
Say hello to Tom Peterson, who I, it appears that Kevin Spelman is absent.
Yes, I'm his backup, so
That's great, we'll take you.
With that in mind, I'm going to keep it fairly brief, since it's going late, so I would say, and unfortunately, because of Kevin's circumstances, we're a little late in getting this report to you, so it was almost two months ago.
I would like to interject and just, for the record, acknowledge Kevin Spelman's incredible dedication to this effort, and with deep gratitude, and also our condolences to him, death and his family.
Yes, very unfortunate. Anyway, so, so you'll have to bear with me, so. I would say, if you've been out to the sites, I had an opportunity to tour Roosevelt, there's a lot of activity going on right now, and you're spending a lot of money. I think the report said something like $780,000 a day, so we're talking about serious construction. And I have to say, I was really impressed with Roosevelt. I actually sat in on the, on the committee, just went blank, anyway, and had a personal interest in that one, and it's really exciting to see it come together. The theater is amazing, the whole library, it's gonna be great, I'm really looking forward to seeing the transformation. Hope to see Franklin soon. However, there are some concerns. The weather, obviously, is a factor. I know it has some impacts on some of my projects as well, and so the implications to the schedule and the budget are a big concern. Hopefully, we'll know more, I'm assuming Jerry and his staff have a chance to do a little further development, and maybe we'll talk about that later, but it did have its implications that could have some impacts to the, our ability to, to, you know, finish this on time and make all the moves. So, obviously, concerns there, but the staff's working very hard to try to make sure, the contractors as well, to try to mitigate any of those implications. The budget also is a concern. They're all, we're running out of contingency, the, and so it, which could have an impact on some of the upcoming IP work, and it kind of remains to see. I think my biggest concern was, you know, the jury's still out on grant, and given the current bidding climate, the unique situation we have in Portland right now, and you're competing for a lot of other, other contractors who are also bidding on their school projects, that will be interesting to see how that plays out. Hopefully, we'll know more in the next meeting, as we, as the contract gets closer to the buyout. And then, I guess the other, other concern will be, just, this summer is going to be a busy summer for the OMF staff, trying to open three schools, move the students to, from Grant to Marshall and so forth. So, so we want to make sure that we, they have all the, the resources that they need to make sure that can happen. I would say, on a positive note, for the most part, the IP program has gone pretty well, remains to be seen, you know, going forward. Safety is, program has been very, very good, which is a, is a great thing. Equity is done well. We've struggled a little bit on the small business component, but that always has been a challenge, especially for the IP, the low bid work. As, as we, you'll see in the report, though, negotiated work often offers opportunities for better improvement, and you see that in the Roosevelt results, 22%, so that's a good thing. Additionally, you may recall there were a couple of performance audits that were performed on the, for, on the, on the program, and the staff has made good progress in finally kind of addressing a lot of those recommendations and putting those kind of behind us. I would say the other concern, and this will be something that we'll probably want to talk about in our next meeting, which I believe is next month, and that is, what are the implications of the upcoming bond program on staff, and how is that going to impact the team's ability to make sure we deliver on this first, this first measure? So, I'm sure they're working hard on it, but obviously, we're going to want to make sure that, we're confident that, that the two programs don't adversely impact each other. And then, I would, I would say, compliment the staff, they've been great to work with, they've been very transparent, so I'm very confident in the folks you have leading this program, so I want to acknowledge that. And, and also, thank you for, for the opportunity for me to be a part of this program. I've enjoyed it as well, and it's been really interesting, and hopefully, we've, we've created or helped in making sure this program is a success. So, that's really all of my comments, so I'll leave it at that. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you. Thank you so much, Tom.
Let me introduce the next topic. As you know, we have a significant bond in progress, a 2012 bond, and we have a tremendous amount of work going on, specifically in four facilities, but in other places as well. And this report is the quarterly report by Jerry Vincent. I introduce Jerry, as you all know, Chief of School Modernization, and he will share with us where he is on all of this, or where we are.
Good evening.
Welcome, Jerry.
Thank you. Just to follow up with BAC, on, on, next board meeting will be coming before you, it's not an action item, it's consent calendar, but we have two BAC members who have finished their time on the BAC. So, we've, we've interviewed, we've discussed, we have two new who will be coming onto the agenda, and it'll be on your consent calendar, and then one for a renewal, so we'll be doing that next week, and next 14th. So, let's, let's get into the update, because we have some of the same concerns that the BAC has, but let's cover it. So, here's the overall pie chart, and you've seen it before, we show it every quarter, shows where the monies are going, where it's being spent. Probably the main difference in this one is the wedge for Grant High School, what Tom refers to, and the bid climate is absolutely correct. We're already seeing, from the time where we locked in the bids on Franklin and Roosevelt in 2014, 15, we're seeing Grant come in here, summer of 2017, with its own bid climate. These numbers need to hold through the summer of 2019. So, it's coming in with its own bid climate, and that's giving us an eyes-wide-open approach for the May 17 bond on those projects, and we're taking a look at those. One of the things I'm starting to do, and this, this will take a while, is to get some of our fellow districts involved in this, neighbor districts. We are seeing what appears to be a, an escalation rate for K-12, possibly K-14, that is not pacing itself with the industry out there. It looks like the industry is still four to five It looks like the industry is still four to five percent escalation per year. We're seeing numbers more in the fifteen, eighteen percent range and a little higher. We want that verified first, we have some ideas why, we're calling in contractors, now that we referred the bond, I have some time, I'm calling in contractors, I'm saying, why don't you come here, why don't you bid PPS? And it's, you know, it's, it's hard work, we're taking historic and landmark buildings, and sometimes students on campus, it's hard work, and they're, they're unabashedly saying there's a lot of work out there right now, and we don't need to come here. So, it shrinks our contractor pool on who does come here. So, yes.
And, and that comparison to the industry standard, is that regionally, or nationally?
It appears to be, it appears to be right around here in Portland. There is a lack of subcontractors to chase this work, especially the size of our projects. You know, we don't do two million and ten million dollar projects, we do eighty, ninety, and hundred million dollar projects, and the subcontractors that travel in those circles, there's not that many, and so knowing that you might have only one or two competitors when we put a certain bid out, it is a, it is, it's a bidder's market right now, so, and it continues to be, be that way. I was talking to someone in my office today, and showing the X that we're dealing with right now, how the costs are still coming up, and our bond money is coming down, and right where those two are running into each other is the Grant High School bid this summer, and, and we're working on some different options and some things, so that's our concern. But that, that's the main thing that's changed in this one right here. We're closing out our summer work projects for fifteen and sixteen, all the other areas of the pie chart are holding steady. We are maintaining, although we are down literally to the hundreds of thousands of dollars in contingencies on the Franklin and the Roosevelt-type projects. You'll see that we, as Tom mentioned, our blue line locking in here is about where we are today, so we're starting to head down, all the way, all the way down until the end of summer, and then we have Grant High School, which will be in its, the early stages, and we ramp back up, and then we bring Grant down, and so that's where the bond is, you know? I mean, the three hundred some million that Tom's referring to, the five-fifty, that's what we did, we, we had a real busy summer and the fall, and we're still continuing right now. So, cash flow-wise, we're landing the bond while the costs are going up, and so we're very, we're being very careful, and that's just like someone would do on a home renovation, really. You know, you're down your last couple of projects, and the money's getting down there, and how are you going to prioritize, and how are you going to do that? So, just to talk about the projects a little bit, over on Franklin, we're seventy-seven percent complete, it might be a little bit higher now, maybe eighty, this was put together in, in the last month for, for the BAC. We have what's called, you know, negative, eleven negative float days, that's saying that currently, we're about eleven days behind schedule. Most of that was due to the snow and the, and the ice. As a subset, our field fell behind twenty-two days, so because we had to clear all the trailers out and cars and start to put the field in, all the snow hit, and then when it melted, it was mud, and so we're still on track to get the field done by mid to late July, but it was, it was on an earlier to mid-June in the beginning. So, different components of the project are traveling, tracking at different rates right now, but overall, this, the, across the projects, we had at least a three-week impact of the snow and the ice, which cost us ten days, but it cost the contractors over three weeks before it was safe and they could get back to the work again. So, this is what, in just in January, you know, right before we got that last round of snow, you take a look, we still have contractors and trailers out here. A couple of things that they, they don't really poke out very well on here, but I'll try, you don't get a chance to see an aerial very much, you know, we talk about our renewable energy, we talk about our solar, you've got it going on up here, and then right over here, and there's another little piece right over here, just happens to see what's going on, you're not going to see that if you're out on the project, but this is where we were in January before the last round of snow kicked in, and we had just started to move all trailers off, you see them up here right now, we had just started all the grading, and in fact, this is probably some snow right here and ice, we got dumped on, you know, and so the field is, is slower than, than where we want it to be right now, but we're hoping to land it in, in time. Things are coming along, gosh, the performing arts area has all the siding up on it now, and the brick, things are looking really good overall in the project, so that's one month, the January to February, and that's the kind of activity that you're hearing is going on out there right now. Some areas right here, so here's the front, if you are out on Fifty Second, and you're looking at the front entry lobby right here to the performing arts, it's big, it's beautiful, it's coming along very nicely, our science areas are done, we're literally just have the, the paper on the counters to protect them from being scratched and things like that. This is one of our heritage projects right here, this is the Franklin floor from the old gymnasium, that's being mounted on the walls as you walk into the new gymnasium right here, kind of akin to Roosevelt, where we have the old one offset in the floor, and, and then we have a, a part of the Nike Heritage Project, which is happening here, and then this is a little better picture of, we got everything finally graded for the football field and began, and then we, we got hit with the, the snow and ice, so this is us coming out of it, the previous aerial photo was, we were still right in it. Roosevelt is seventy-four percent complete, again, maybe seventy-seven now, this information is a month old. A little picture of the upstairs of the student commons area, they're loving it, I mean, we talked to the vice principal out there, it has a college-type feel, they're sitting there, they feel pretty good, they've got their, their wireless, you know, phones, laptops, you know, it's just a great gathering place, and we have two times more space coming in the next phase, as it comes around the corner and fills in in between the buildings, and they're just very excited about it, you know? We've had one recordable accident recently, minor, all of them, and we're like seven, eight accidents over all these millions of dollars on these projects, all minor. I want to talk about Phase Two and Phase Three this summer, though, because that is where the impact of the weather really will show itself. So, this is the overall aerial photo of what's going on, but what I want you to see is the next photo. This is this summer, so right now, the tent was just removed. The snow causing school year to go on, causing teachers to be there longer, causing unpack, these portables right here, and this tenplex portable, we would have started to clear the furniture out and take them down on the fourteenth or fifteenth of June, now we're like the twenty-first to the twenty-third, where we disconnect the power, take the furniture out, disconnect the buildings, literally, and take them away. That's an impact on Phase Three, which is the fields. The other impact is we need to abate and demolish the interim administration building, which is the old library, and then we have to come over to the food service and some classroom buildings, we've got to take them down, and then our current construction offices are in the old auto shop, all of those need to be abated this summer, torn down, those four right here, this is actually one, it looks like two, but they're connected, so three buildings have to come down, we have to disconnect these portables and take them away, and we have to finish everything to do with the nineteen-twenty-one building that we're in right now, and all that work has to hit in this summer. So, the way the calendar changed, you know, a couple of years ago with school starting earlier, the way it's going to be later because of the snow and ice, there's a lot of going on out here this summer on this site that needs to be coordinated and take place. In our previous phases, if something wasn't quite done, we still had some room over in the old building that was available, these buildings are all coming down, there's no room in the end, we've got to hit this thing, we've got to hit it right on, right on the money, and we have to get all this done. So, it's going to be a challenge to coordinate Roosevelt this summer. Here's some outdated pictures of the quad area, the, the rest of the student commons area that's in between, that's under construction, as Tom mentioned, the theater is done, just something, this just looks like maybe nothing to you, but when we find our structural is no longer, the integrity, when we strip the building down to the bones, we have to put in shoring, we have to put shoring in from the sub-level all the way up to the upstairs, and it's had a significant cost. We have the building shored up enough now where structurally, where all of this temporary comes down, it'll, it not only, it really clears the way to start going with the construction, now that you're done deconstructing, and we have nineteen sheer walls, seismic sheer walls we have going in, and have already been put in so far out on this site. In regards to the theater, there's, there's handouts in the back, I would just want you to know that they are having their own ribbon cutting of the theater, all board members are invited, and it is, just misplaced it right here, sorry, I'll find it. But the great thing about this one is the student, it's a student production, the students are putting it on, the students wrote it, the students did everything, the, the performing arts teacher's just so excited about it, and there's a press release, and so it's up in the front, I, I apologize, it was right here minutes ago, I'll probably come across So, Grant High School, this is what we're talking about, the, the cost of construction right now is, is that, the project is at one-sixteen total. We are doing everything we can to keep program in the project, we have had a couple redesigns with some things taken out that don't affect the program twice, and we've been meeting with the contractor regularly, and we are gathering numbers and taking some subcontractor early bids and taking a look at it, so we can do an early work amendment, and we're trying to commit some of the contractors right now before they load up on summer work, which, and become less competitive in a market that's already becoming less competitive for them, so we're trying to jump the gun and sign some of them up now. I'll have more update for you on our next quarterly and how this process is going. Fabian is at sixty-five, probably again sixty-eight percent complete right now, if you haven't had a chance to get out there, it's really starting to take shape now, it's just not a big concrete box, we have walls going in, things are happening, exciting project. Again, we, we, just recently, I believe it was like two weeks ago since we did this update, we had our first recordable accident, it was minor, and again, we have like seven total across the project. And here's an aerial of Fabian, we've got things dried in and roofs all on, all brick is up on the exterior. The Concordia University had a home, these homes came, we raised these homes as part of the demolition process, but they had a home just right over here that the president of the university was in and some staff. Well, that's part of the property here that we need to develop and finish developing, so they are back over on their side in their campus, we have torn that home down, and it was their offices, and so they've been relocated, and that was the project that lasted a couple of months, we took care of that. And here's what it's starting to look like inside, we have a large atrium area in the center, you can see two stories down and, and three, three up when you're in the lobby, it's a large building. You see the, the entrance to the building, the southwest entrance, dry walls going in, doors, frames, it's starting to look like a real building out there. Our improvement projects from sixteen, we have a couple elevators that we always knew were two-step elevators, they weren't like the new additions that we put on the outside of the building, they were inside the building, so we had to do all the work inside in the first summer, come in and do the second work this coming summer, so we'll finish our last two elevator projects there. And I just thought I'd kind of summarize for those who wanted to know what this looks like right now. So, we did fifty-two schools thus far for about sixty-three, sixty-four million dollars, that's kind of the breakout of it, with the roof in seismic and then seismic overall, elevators, ADA, classrooms, that breakout. We are looking at, and, and Tom mentioned it, we have designed two thousand seventeen IP, and I'm stopping right there. I, I wrote a letter to, to Yusef and to Bob saying, I feel financially it would be irresponsible for us to bid that work out and continue this summer, we've taken the message there. We don't, we're trying to change the culture around here, we don't need another broken promise on something that didn't happen. We have four financial responsibilities this summer before I feel like we can commit to a fifth one. We've got to land Fabian, we have to land Franklin, we have to land Roosevelt, we have to successfully bid Grant, and I just felt, you know, the contracts for IP are even less interesting to the smaller subs, so they almost always come in overbid, we have to create a contingency for them, and I just feel like the importance right now is landing these four commitments before we as a board and we as a department commit to a fifth one. So, that, that's the official word on IP. They're designed, they're almost complete, they'd be shovel-ready when we land these projects, and if there's some money left, something can get back out again, but I think it's the responsible thing to do, and I think it's, it's the prudent thing for us to do. So, with that, that's the update, and I'll entertain any questions if you have any.
It's incredible amount of work.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. All right, thanks.
Thank you, Jerry. Thanks, Jerry. All right, all those of you who have been patiently waiting, we have our charter school renewals before us, so this is the culmination of a process that the Charter School Committee has had underway for the last several months. We have two charter school renewal requests this evening, Kairos PDX and Trillium. The Board's Charter Committee held public hearings on both requests and unanimously approved moving them to the full board for a vote. We will begin with the request from Kairos PDX. I'd like to ask Tara O'Neil, our Charter School Manager, who by the way, has done an excellent job of preparing all of this work for this moment. New to the, new to the district, to the central office, and really has done a wonderful job, so please introduce the renewal for Kairos PDX.
Thanks so much, I'm Tara O'Neil, I'm the Program Director of Charter Schools at PPS. We, as district sponsors of charter schools in Oregon, are responsible for evaluating charter school performance and determining whether or not to renew the contract of the charter school through a process governed by ORS three-three-eight point oh-six-five. The sponsor must base the renewal evaluation primarily on a review of the charter school's annual performance reports, annual audit of accounts, and annual site visit and review. The criteria a school district board must use to determine whether or not to renew a charter school are listed in ORS three-three-eight point oh-six-five eight. Kairos PDX Learning Academy opened in two thousand fourteen, serving students in grades K-one. Kairos is currently operating in grades K-three and will eventually grow by one grade a year to be a K-five school. Kairos was created to focus on eliminating racial achievement and opportunity gaps by engaging and empowering children and families using culturally relevant inquiry-based instruction rooted in multicultural education. Kairos has served only grades K-three to date, so there's no state assessment data yet to report, however, two thousand fifteen, sixteen map assessments highlight that sixty-two percent of students exceeded growth targets in reading and forty-seven percent exceeded growth targets in math. In addition, Kairos's year-round academic calendar contributes to continued academic growth. The district entered into a three-year initial contract with Kairos for the operation of a K-five school in two thousand fourteen. This contract terminates on June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. Kairos submitted its formal application requesting renewal of its charter school on January second in accordance with statute, and on January nineteenth, district staff performed the required annual school site visit, and on February twenty-first, the Board Charter Committee held a public hearing in consideration of Kairos's renewal request per statute, and unanimously, unanimously moved the matter forward to the full board. The renewal recommendation is based on information gathered from the official site visit, the renewal hearing, the annual performance framework and report, and other information obtained during the renewal period. Kairos opened with a three-year initial charter, and statute specifies that the first renewal of a charter shall be for the same time period as the initial charter. Kairos has requested a three-year renewal of its charter, and I'll turn this over now to Kairos representatives.
Who's coming down?
I think we'll, we'll, let me introduce the motion, and then we'll take public testimony unless, okay, all right. The Board will now consider Resolution number five-four-one-two, Resolution Improving Renewal of the Charter Agreement with Kairos PDX Learning Academy. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I think I heard Julie down there, too. Director Anthony moves and Director Asparza Brown seconds the motion to adopt Resolution five-four-one-two. Ms. Houston, is there any public comment on this?
Yes, we have one, Ronnie Herndon.
Thank you.
Ronnie, do I need to move my stuff off the tables here? I want to just get it on.
I, I wouldn't ask you to be that active for this late in the evening, Steve. I know it's getting close to bedtime for some of us.
Welcome.
Board members, it is a pleasure to have the opportunity to speak on behalf of Kairos, good work that they've been doing, although there are some people...
People have raised questions about whether or not charter schools should be part of what education does, I think that if we are humble in our assessment, then we must say that we do not have a magic bullet when it comes to educating children, and certainly children who have not been served well by education in this country. And when we have an effort that we can learn from, an effort in which people are making the kind of progress that you just heard from those statistics, that we should support that, and hopefully, we learn from them, and we have an opportunity to improve what we do in public education, so I certainly do see this as a compliment. the kind of progress that you just heard from those statistics, that we should support that. And hopefully we learn from them and we have an opportunity to improve what we do in public education. So I certainly do see this as a compliment. I do not view it as some kind of threat to public education and would hope that this board unanimously supports the extension of the contract with Kairos. How's that?
Fantastic. Thank you. Is there any board discussion on this resolution? Um, yeah, I'm sorry. So did you want to come up as part of, to make your presentation as part of Tara's introduction before we have our discussion? Okay. We, we certainly have had a lot of discussion in our, in our charter committee meetings. So board discussions, Director Buell, you had something?
Yeah, I'd just like to point out for the people, particularly at home watching on TV and some of the people in the audience, that Kairos is, and all of the charter schools that we're bringing forward are what the charter school system should be. They're not for-profit charter chains where people are trying to make money. These are charters that are trying to help children and are hopefully helping us too. They're, they're not the Edison, they're not the KIP, big charter schools, and keeping those out of Oregon is really critical. And so supporting, a lot of people get mixed up about that. And so I just want to make sure that everybody watching home knows, these are not big charter chains. These are schools that are really trying to do education right.
Thank you. I would just add from our conversations as a charter committee, we, um, really approached it like you were speaking of, Mr. Herndon, which is that our charter schools are an opportunity for our larger system to really learn from different approaches that are getting good results with our kids. And we certainly have no business turning a blind eye to anything experimental like that. We have, we have a lot to learn. And this is a, in my mind, a wonderful example of, of, uh, something that's working and that can inform our practices throughout the system in a lot of meaningful ways.
Absolutely. Chair, closing our gaps, the historic, the gaps that have been so entrenched here between kids of color and, um, and more mainstream children, we're really pleased with the work that's happening. It, it fits our mission. So thank you for your hard work.
The board will now vote on resolution 5412. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes. All opposed, please indicate by saying no.
Yes.
Sorry, guys. Uh, any opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution 5412 is approved by a vote of six to zero with student representative Bradley voting.
Yes.
All right.
Nice work.
I'd like to ask Tara to come back, please, and representatives from Trillium Charter School to the testimony table for a brief presentation.
Trillium Public Charter School opened in 2002 as a K-12 Democratic and Constructivist charter school in North Portland. Trillium currently serves up to 365 students and is in its 15th year of operation. In 2002, the district entered into a five-year initial contract with Trillium and in 2007 and 2012 voted to renew Trillium's charter. The 2012 contract terminates on June 30th, 2017. At the time of the 2012 renewal, Trillium was financially unstable, working on recovering from a deficit, paying off substantial purse debt, and searching for a new executive director. In the time since, Trillium has reorganized structurally, implemented budget controls and internal checks and balances, nearly retired its purse debt, built and maintained a healthy cash balance, and hired and retained an executive director. Trillium has also made academic changes, most notably redesigning the high school program, including increased rigor through proficiency-based grading, increased FTE and structure, classes for struggling students, and multiple options for obtaining a high school diploma. The ninth grade class entering in 2013 will be graduating in 2017 and will be the first class to gain the benefit of the full four years of their redesigned program. And the cohort in 10th grade at that time of the redesign graduated last year with the highest graduation rate in the school's history at 70 percent. Trillium submitted its formal application requesting renewal of its charter on January 2nd in accordance with statute. On January 18th and 25th, district staff performed the required school site visit. And on February 14th, the board charter committee held a public hearing in consideration of Trillium's renewal request per statute and unanimously moved the matter forward to the full board. The renewal recommendation is based on information gathered from the official site visit, the renewal hearing, Trillium's annual performance framework and report, and other information obtained during the renewal period. By statute, this renewal term must be for no fewer than five years and no more than 10 years. Trillium has requested a five-year renewal of their charter. And now you'll hear from Trillium's representatives.
My name is Kieran Connolly. I'm the executive director of Trillium. Pardon my cold I'm speaking through right now. I just have a short statement to make. Thank you for giving us the time and opportunity to speak about our school today. The charter school movement, as Director Buell pointed out, was initially founded to create schools to be both hubs of innovation on behalf of the public education system and to serve students that might otherwise not be served well. At Trillium, we take both aspects of this ethic to heart and strive to meet them both consistently and successfully. Over the past five years, we've served many of the students most on the margins of our public education system. We work to ensure those and all students receive an education that yields them success in their years beyond Trillium, both as professionals and as community members. We also serve, we also publicly share our learning on the cutting edge of education, both with Portland Public Schools, our Oregon charter colleagues, and schools and education networks throughout the nation, including the Ashoka Changemakers Network. At Trillium, we see our students as unique problem solvers, capable of tackling the challenges of the world, whether in their classroom community, right outside their door, or throughout our nation. We teach our students to explore the world, understand how it works, and to think critically. We do this by treating our students not as passive receivers of information but as active meaning makers capable of having a profound impact upon the world. More than ever, our, our world needs critical consumers of knowledge and active citizens. This isn't just an extension of what we do at Trillium, it's our foundation. From project-based learning to restorative circles, students learn to solve conflicts, heal harm, take responsibility, consider the challenges of our world, and become active change agents upon it. In light of this work, we believe that Trillium is a school whose importance and value to PPS and public education at large will only grow over the course of the next charter contract, and we look forward to fulfilling that great responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you. The board will now consider resolution number 5413, resolution approving renewal of the charter agreement with Trillium Charter School. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Director Knowles moves and Director Anthony seconds the motion to adopt resolution 5413. Ms. Houston, is there any public comment?
There's none.
Is there any board discussion on the resolution?
I'll just, I'll just make a statement, given our review of Trillium in our charter meeting. And I, Kieran, ran through a lot of the things that we were concerned about when we started that hearing, but I was happy to see at the very end that we were very pleased to forward this recommendation with a unanimous vote. The stability of the organization, the, um, your absence of your debt, um, the new director doing a fabulous job, uh, your board, the added staff and restructuring of your administrative team, I think has made a big difference for you. Your curriculum and then most, and then of course your increase in your graduation rates are just great. And I want to reiterate that what's already been said here about Portland Public Schools using its charters as kind of like lab schools to help us with innovation in our own, um, work here at Portland Public, to get new ideas, to, to figure out new ways to help all of our students be successful. So very excited to give you guys this renewal tonight.
The board will now vote on resolution 5413. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes. Yes. All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? Resolution 5413 is approved by a vote of six to zero with student representative Bradley voting.
Yes.
All right. Okay. Congratulations. It really is a pretty detailed and rigorous process that our charter schools go through for renewal, so thank you all for all of your work and attention. All right, the board will now consider the remaining items on its business agenda, having already voted on resolutions 5411 through 5413, and resolution 5409 has been withdrawn. Board members, are there any items you would like to pull for a separate discussion and vote?
We're in the whole business now?
We are.
What about the other three charter ones?
Uh, just two renewals.
Okay. I, I have something I'd like to pull.
All right, what is that? Director-
Two, two separate ones together, 5404. And the non-renewals and so forth, all of that group, which looks to me like 5407 to 5410. Is that right?
So 5404, you would like to poll 5407, 5408, and 5410?
No, I guess there's a 09 here too.
That's been polled already.
Okay.
5407, 5408, and 5410. Is that correct?
I'm, yeah, I'm trying to make sure that that's correct. No, it's, no, it's, okay. That's where we're going.
Okay. If, seeing-
Which were the 23, which were the ones that we had? We had 23 on a list. That includes this particular, it, it includes all of these, correct? Could we have, could, could I get that clarified so we pull the right thing? It's kind of, it's not really clear here.
About the status of the different non-renewal?
It's not overly clear.
What is your question exactly, Director Buell?
We had a discussion on a group of people who, we were non-renewing or, or terminating. I want to make sure that these 5407, 5408, and 5410 include people who were in that discussion that we had last week.
Sean, are you coming to our aid?
Steve is looking to remove things from the business agenda, but-
Evening, board members. How can I assist?
Uh, I think Director Buell is asking-
Let me just ask a question?
Yeah.
We had originally 23 people that we talked about and we have five people that made it through to the discussion that we had. Does this encompass all of those people? 5407, 5408, 5409, and 5410? I got confused when they pulled 5409. I want to make sure 5409-
So 5409, which was pulled before tonight's meeting, is a notice of second-time non-extension contract teachers.
So 5409 would include the non-extension contract teachers that the board will be voting on?
That included some of those?
Uh, the ones that we talked about during executive session?
Could you say that again, please?
Are you saying the ones that we talked about during executive session?
No, all of the whole shebang.
50, uh, excuse me, 5409 would not include the 22 original-
It doesn't?
-on the list. No, it does not. No, it does not.
Okay.
And that is because that group is not coming forward for this process, right?
That is because, uh, the original list, the 22, we had a number who either resigned or were reassigned, and so the list dwindled down to the five that the board received, which includes an administrator.
Right, and they're under which, which numbers here?
5408, 5409.
It should be under 5407, 5408, and 5409, and 5410.
So some of, some of the final five, one or more was in 5409?
Yes.
I thought today was a deadline of some sorts.
Yes. So, um, the employee that's listed in 50, excuse me, 5409 resigned-
Oh, okay. Great. Thank you, that's, that's, thank you.
All right.
Appreciate your help.
You're welcome.
Sorry, I was confused, I just couldn't make it out.
So do you want to pull, uh, anything?
Yeah, I want to pull all those.
5407, 5408, and 5410?
Four, yes.
Okay. Uh, these items will be discussed and voted on after we vote on the remainder of the business agenda. Ms. Houston, are there any changes to the business agenda?
No.
Do I have a motion and a second to adopt the business agenda?
So, second.
Uh, Director Knowles moves and Director Anthony seconds the adoption of the business agenda. Ms. Houston, is there any public comment on the business agenda not including the items that were polled?
Yes.
Or, okay, or is there any comment?
We have three signed up for public comment.
Okay. Okay. We'll take those all together.
Okay. So our first two speakers would be Carrie Starnes and Ben Hildur.
Hi.
Welcome.
My name is Carrie Starnes, S-T-A-R-N-S, and thank you for listening to me. I'm here to express my opinion that terminating Mr. Bertrand's contract would be a great loss to PPS. I came to know Mr. B., as we call him, while he was an assistant principal at Vestal Elementary. My two children attended Vestal and I was very involved in the PTA and playworks fundraising. During that time, I could see and hear that he was a well-liked and respected administrator. He handled a difficult climate at Vestal with professionalism and plenty of patience. Our youngest was being bullied and harassed at school. We felt the response to these incidents were consistently lacking by administration, except when Mr. B. was available to address our concerns and he handled it with fairness, transparency, and guidance. Specifically, we felt our child was better served by his response. I firmly believe Vestal would be in better shape today if Mr. B. was the principal. You got a sense that he really cared about children and their welfare. He took his job seriously and maintained a friendly demeanor, even though his work environment could be quite difficult. His consistency with students and parents was welcomed and much needed, and the staff at Vestal seemed to trust him. I also spent time with Mr. B. at social school functions off school property. He was always engaging and friendly, not once was any behavior or discussion inappropriate. His character is backed by integrity. Again, Mr. B. would be an asset to any school, and I must appeal to you that PPS needs to keep administrators like him in their schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Anthony Bertrand, B-E-R-T-R-A-N-D. I come forward requesting board members to reconsider and delay, delay tonight's decision on resolution number 5410, notice of non-renewal of probationary administrator Mr. Anthony Bertrand. Though concerns have been brought forward around my actions as a PPS administrator, I'm here to not only advocate for myself but to also advocate on behalf of the other PAPS members for fair treatment and due process. Further, I would hope to avoid any further disciplinary actions or retaliation in coming forward and addressing the board this evening. Recently, concerns have been expressed about my ability to represent PPS in which I do not take lightly. However, I believe this investigation process has not been transparent or fair. I have had less than five days upon receiving, excuse me, I've had less than five business days upon receiving a notice of non-renewal to respond to this action or to provide clarification to board members prior to tonight's vote. I would further request an opportunity to present information to the PPS board members during the next executive session around incidents pertaining to the recommendations of non-renewal and ensuring that all voices- of non-renewal, and ensuring that all voices are heard prior to voting. I have currently been an employee of Portland Public Schools for the last 10 years. During this time, not once received any complaints around my actions. As a PPS employee, I have worked as a classroom teacher, a school improvement specialist, and an assistant principal. I believe I have successfully carried out your seven priorities, including the Board's mission, included in the Board's mission statement. As a classroom teacher, a majority of my students in my class met or exceeded state benchmark scores. My best accomplishment as a classroom teacher has been seeing so many of my students become first-generation college graduates and students themselves. As a school improvement specialist, through hard work, collaboration, and dedication amongst the teachers at Kelly, we were able to increase literacy achievement during our first year and move to a Level III to a Level IV in our second year. Although my years as an assistant principal at Vestal were not as successful around student achievement, I was able to build strong relationships with many of the students, parents within the community, and staff. And however, I experienced a lack of mentoring and became frustrated. Therefore, when the opportunity to transfer to Lent became available, I was excited about the possibility of going to another Title I school. During the past three years, the community of Lent has seen six different administrators. This summer, there was a 40% turnover in the teaching staff. The staff and the PTA parents expressed a desire for systems, routines, structures, and a sense of normalcy. I've been able to effectively collaborate with the interim principal and staff to develop those systems that were missing or ineffective. The feedback from the community and staff has been positive. Professional development has shifted to focus on differentiated instruction and increasing student achievement. There's still much work to be done to support the school community at Lent, and my desire is to continue that process. We tell our students to persevere, learn from mistakes, and stand up for what they believe. I want to model this in my own actions in addressing the PPS School Board this evening. I acknowledge mistakes have been made, but I once again ask you to reconsider or delay the decision for non-renewal. And do not make this decision without taking the time to honor the letters that I've included and submitted by the PPS families and by teachers that I have supervised and worked alongside with. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Chair Constan... Ben Hildner is here for a testimony.
Okay, great. Please come on up.
Sorry, I'm not oriented to this. I've never done this. Do I just go?
State your name, yeah.
My name is Ben Hildner. I am the PTA treasurer at Lent K8 School. I've been a community member for five years. My son is in fourth grade, and I have a kindergartner. So, I wrote a letter. I included Mike Rosen, who's our regional Board member, as well as Antonio Lopez. Basically, I just wanted to come and support Tony Bertrand, as having been an amazing and very supportive administrator to our community. I just barely caught some of what he was saying, that we have been through very difficult years of transition, dealing with cancer with Terry Singh, and previous principals, coming and going. It's been very unstable, and our community needs stability desperately. It's been a rocky road. We've grown. We've come a long way. We just built a playground this year, and Tony has been out there getting muddy and sloppy-wet with us, and he's been one of the few people with PPS who's been there every single time. Mike Rosen, also, I appreciate you coming to our barbecue for the amphitheater a few years ago. So, we need all the support and the stability that we can get, and I'm asking, as a parent of the Lent community, to maintain the direction that we're going. We have some momentum. I think that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We will now vote on the business agenda. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes. It's without the items that Steve pulled. You pulled...
He was 5410. He was 5410.
So, let's vote on the business agenda. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? The business agenda is approved by a vote of six to zero with student Representative Bradley voting. Great.
Amy, if you start on 5404, that'll be easier.
I think the ones we pulled were...
5404 was the first one, and it's separate from the other three.
Okay, we had originally 5407, 5408, and 5410.
5404 was the first one I asked, and it's separated out from those. We already pulled that. 5404.
Okay.
Yeah.
We didn't discuss that.
I don't have to discuss it. We can just vote.
Okay, so, uh, we are... You, you want to just put forward 5404 for a vote on its own? All in favor of approving 5404, election of third-year probationary administrators? Please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed, please indicate by saying no.
No.
Uh, any abstentions? The business agenda is approved by... What?
Five to one.
Five, excuse me, 5404 is approved by a vote of five to one with student Representative Bradley voting.
Yes.
Okay, so, that's 5404. We'll proceed... Director Buell, shall we proceed to 5407, notice of non-renewal?
If it would be okay with me, we could take them all together.
Uh, that's okay by me, so, um, the Board will now vote on resolutions 5407, 5408, and 5410.
Are we... We need a resolution on them first, don't we? Because they're not resolved yet. No one's made a motion to handle them.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah.
Kind of confusing the way that it is here.
Ms. Houston, do we switch the numbers when we... No, we are the next number. 5407, 08, and 5410. 5409 has been withdrawn.
Okay. All right, so, you want to take those all together?
Okay.
The Board will now vote on...
No, we gotta do the... Somebody's got to do the motion first.
Right, let's give her a chance.
Yeah, so, we're calling for a vote on 5407, 5408, and 5410. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Okay, moved by Director Anthony, seconded by Director Knowles. Do we have any discussion on any of these items? No, all right?
Yes, yes, I have discussion. And I'd like to make an amendment.
All right.
Want to go with amendment?
Yeah, or discussion?
I think we, uh...
Are you proposing an amendment, Steve?
I'm proposing... Let's put it... Why don't I propose a table? That would be easier. Why don't I propose... I move to table these to next meeting.
All three of these items?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Do we have a... Do we need a parliamentary call?
I'm, I'm just not sure. I think you have... I think you've already got a motion on the table, so you can't have another one.
So, do we just have to remove the previous motion, or...
Well, if you, if you, if you... If you move the previous motion, then all of these, seven, eight, and 10, you're voting on them.
Then you could never move a table, ever, if you couldn't table.
Well, there isn't really, I mean, officially in parliamentary procedure, there isn't really a tabling.
From the chair there.
It's been made up over the years, so...
I'll move an amendment. I make an amendment then.
What is it you're trying to achieve? Why don't you just do that?
Well, I'd like to move it back a week before we vote on them.
So, you want some more time?
Okay.
So, why don't I make an amendment?
That'll work.
Okay, I'll move that we take 5407, 5408, 5410, and vote on it next week, instead of this week.
Wait.
There's already a motion on the table.
We do have...
It's amendment. I made an amendment.
You're amending a motion.
I'm amending this motion.
Okay, so, our motion for approval for these three items has been amended to ask for their consideration at next week's meeting.
Now, it's voting on the amendment.
Got a second?
Discussion on the amendment. A second, yeah, we need a second.
I'd second.
Okay, Director Buell moves, Director Anthony seconds. Discussion? On the amendment? I, I would like to ask staff what the ramifications would be of delaying our action on these three issues.
Good move. I'd like to know that, too.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Stephanie Harper, General Counsel, but Board has to take action by the 15th of this month.
Okay, so...
By the 15th?
Yes.
We have...
So, we do have a week.
Our next Board meeting is within that window.
Yes.
So, there would be no negative effect to delaying decision on these three items to next week?
To my knowledge, I don't think so, no.
Oh, great.
Okay. All right, so, we will...
Do we have a discussion?
Yes.
I would just like to add that, it's my understanding, there'll be two Board members absent next week, just a point of information.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Two Board members absent.
Two Board members absent next week, just a point of information.
Okay.
It's okay, thank you.
Thank you. On the 14th.
So, my question is, for what purpose would you like to delay these? Director Buell, I just...
Yeah, I was going to discuss that anyhow, but that's fine. Thank you for asking, okay? One of the things that I regularly do is to check when we're going to do non-extensions, non-renewal, terminations. I like to check and make sure everybody was on the same page. And when I checked with the union and asked about it, because they said, or the union person that I talked to, which is one of their major people, said this... I said, "How'd these come out? We're all on the same page, right? We're down, and we have five people who are being dealt with," so, so to speak, and how... So, that... And everybody was happy, right? And the answer was, "No, this is the worst process that I've ever gone through in, as a PAT member." And that was a person who's been around for several years, who's been doing these. The worst process, because there were all sorts of things where the... They maintained that we didn't follow the contract, we were unfair, we were not... And I have a list of them, but I'd rather not read them if I don't have to. But I'd be... I've got them here. But there were a lot of things where there was a lot of contention around whether or not we were following the contract, following the law, whether we're being unfair, and so on. And I don't want to, I don't want to terminate or non-renew people when there's that type of tension out there. So, what, what I suggest is that during the next week, we sit down with our HR people and with our representatives for the teachers who represent all of these people, and we get it all straight. And we sit down on each person and go through what took place with each person. Is this person... Did they have a fair hearing? Did they go through... Was it all done fairly? And, and that's what we need to do. That's what we should do. That's my responsibility here, and that's all of our responsibility, to make sure that we followed the contract, and everybody's happy when we sit down and say, "Okay, the contract was followed." That's fine. And I... And the law was followed. And we treated people responsibly and fairly. And right now, that's not the case. So, if we do this right now, we're... We've got a terrific PR problem with our union, who will probably do grievance over this whole thing. And so, and I, I want to avoid that, and it's easy, since we have a week. I didn't think we had a week. I was really worried, but I thought we had to do it by tonight for sure. But we don't. We got a week. So, let's sit down and make sure every person of the original 23, because what happens? It's not just that you terminate somebody, it's also you push them out. Did we push any of these people out? And the easy way to push them out is to give them a hard enough time that they'll leave. It's harder to do in Portland than it is in suburbs. They do it in the suburbs all the time. Portland is hard, because people don't want to leave Portland, because they live here, and they don't want to move out to the suburbs, and so forth, and so forth, start their life over. You don't want to terminate people incorrectly for a couple of reasons. One, because it's not right. But another one is, we're dealing with these people's total career. If you get fired out of your job as a school teacher, you don't get another job, basically any place. You might go work in some little, small place in Colorado, or you might work in some little, small place in Idaho, who can't find any teachers. But you don't go out in the suburbs here with your home and so forth. So, we need to be right when we do this. We need to have followed the steps correctly. We need to have been fair and reasonable and take care of this. This is not about, this is not about good teachers, bad teachers. There's plenty... I've worked with plenty of bad teachers that I thought, geez, get these people out of here. And I've done that, and maybe people thought that about me, I don't know. But the point is, that's not what it's about. It's about doing it in the way that you're supposed to, following the contract, and making sure when we're done, both sides, in this case, it's sides, agree that the contract was followed and that this makes sense. And so, we need to go through each of these people, and I'm suggesting we put it off. And then, I'm suggesting if, if, if someone wants to tell me from the administration that we're going to do that, sit down with the union and go through each person, make sure we, we followed the contract and so forth, and get it straight. We even have little problems with the contract itself in that, what do we believe is the case? And it's around, uh, it's around that we've kind of, in Portland, have made up something that we like, and they kind of accepted it, but to, in order to push people out. So, we've made up, uh, what's called, uh, kind of a support system, and we named it. And the union thinks that, that you can't do anything around any of our teachers with that system, because it's not in the contract. But we seem to think that we can fire people based on it. Well, that discrepancy is incredible, and we need to clean that up before we fire, or we terminate, or we non-renew, or we change the status of any of these people. Let's just get it cleaned up. We got a week to do it. It's, it's going to be hard work, but we need to do it, so everybody is fine about it. And they're not now. And what I was going to say was, the one thing I'd be more than willing to make, if the superintendent doesn't want to say, "Okay, we'll do that, Steve, in this next week," then I'd be more than willing to make a resolution that we do that.
Okay, so, just to clarify, what we're talking about is there are five individuals identified in these three resolutions that have been pulled, and we're talking about having some point in the next, between now and the next Board meeting, further discussion with the union about the process that has led us to this point. We already had extensive discussion about each of these situations in our executive session.
Yeah, but there were, yeah, but there were only five that we discussed. There's 23 on this original list now.
This, so, what we're discussing right now is just five individuals, these, in the three resolutions that have been pulled.
My motion referred to everybody who was ever on the list, though.
Well, I don't know what that is. Your motion was resolution 5407, 5408, and 5410. And if you look at those resolutions, that pertains to five people.
Yeah, but I added an amendment that pertained to everybody.
No, that was not the amendment that we voted on. We vote, we voted on pulling out these three resolutions.
That's what this amendment... Right, we pulled these out, but I added an amendment to this, which pertains to the original 23 people. That would include the people who are, who we pushed out, too. The original 23 in the list is what the motion...
Okay.
That's what my motion is.
We don't have... We... Say again?
Ms. Houston, can you read the motion? The motion, as I understand it, is to vote on the three resolutions that were pulled next week, and Director Buell has added he'd like to discuss all 23.
Okay, yeah, okay, that's fine. That's fine.
Please let her finish.
Fine.
The three resolutions only have five names. So, you're pulling those three to be tabled for a vote next week.
Okay, so, I think we should finish with that, and then if you feel that that...
Can I make a motion then? That pertains to this whole thing?
I know. There's already a men... There's already a motion on the table.
Right, but not now, but I mean, when we're done, can I make another motion then, Amy? Please.
Yeah, let's finish this, which is the amendment to put off consideration of 5407, 5408, 5410 until next week. of 5407, 5408, 5410 until next week. So we have, already have a motion, so we can just vote on that.
We can have discussion, can't we?
Yeah.
Other than Director Buell?
Yes, we can have discussion prior to our vote.
I just wanna be clear for the public who's watching about the process that we go through when we're considering the non-renewal of a teacher or, um, the non-renewal. It's not something that just happens slapdash, in fact, I spent the afternoon going through every single one of those recommendations again. Most of them are two or three pages long, including all of the assistance that was given to the individuals who are being considered, and the work that has been done with them through plans of assistance over a year's time. This isn't something that just comes up all of a sudden, this is work that's being done with people, trying to keep them, trying to help them be the best teachers they can be, or the best administrators they can be. After all, I can't count the number of times we've had people in front of us saying, "The most important thing is to have the best teacher possible in front of our students." And none of us here take lightly the responsibility of making sure that we make that happen. It's not something we do lightly, we understand what it means to the individuals that were, uh, non-renewing, uh, we understand that. But we rely on our HR staff, on our principals, on our senior directors who work directly with administrators, on our principals who review all of the work of these teachers and work with them on plans of assistance. We rely on them to let us know how they're doing and if they think they have what it takes to be the best teacher that you can possibly be for Portland Public Schools. So, I, I just wanted to be very clear about the process that we go through. I haven't heard anything from the union about being unhappy about this, um, and I don't know, uh, if Steve brought all these up during executive session, and I, and we're not gonna discuss them, that, because we don't discuss executive session in public. So, uh, I just wanted to be very clear about our process so that people out there know what's going on, and, and don't think that we're just doing this lightly.
All right. Director Buell?
No, I didn't know about them previous till yesterday, about the complaints and the difficulties and the fact that in ma, in some cases, they were, uh, the person that I talked to from the union, who worked with these, some of these cases, uh, said that we hadn't followed the contract in their, the way that they're interpreting the contract. Now, you gotta vote, you, it's an e, it's an easy vote here, are we voting to make sure we follow the con, teacher contract and the law? Or are we voting to just go ahead, what the heck, and not double-check things? Now, I know that, I'm trying not to read the list, be glad to read the list of where we haven't followed things and so forth, but I know, I'm trying not to do it, I'm trying to say, "Let's take, let's go back, this is so messy, let's go back and look at it again, and make sure we followed the contract." Now, yeah, we, we are careful. We try to be careful, but, it's not just about getting the best teachers, it's about getting rid of the teachers who are the most difficult and, and are hard and don't do a good job. I wanna get rid of those people in Portland Public Schools, I'm sorry, and so does every good teacher, frankly, that I've ever talked to, and every good administrator wants those people out of teaching, but, the law and the contract which we signed says we need to do that in a certain way, and if we haven't done it in that way, which I'm maintaining the union doesn't believe that we have, then we need to say, "Okay, let's make sure that we're following the contract and doing it in that way." That's my responsibility, and frankly, it's everybody else's responsibility, sitting up here on this table.
Sean, we have not received any communication as a board regarding any of these issues, nothing through formal channels, so would you like to comment on this?
Sure. Uh, first, there has not been a grievance filed by the union in regards to the non-extension, non-renewal process. That does not mean that they may file a grievance, however, to date, they have not filed a grievance. Additionally, we have worked with our union partners on all of the employees who have been identified through the non-extension, non-renewal process. And just for clarification, non-renewals are for probationary employees, non-extensions are for our contracted teachers. What Director Buell is referencing in terms of not following the contract relates to our non-renewal employees, probationary employees. Essentially, state statute requires for our non-extension employees that you place them on a plan of assistance. We have something called a plan of support that we have put together for our probationary teachers, that's what's in dispute. It's not in the contract, it's not in state statute. However, it identifies the number of supports that have been given to a teacher to help them be successful. We're not required to do it, we won't do it anymore, however, we thought that we were helping our teachers be successful. In addition to this process, we, of the twenty-two, it's actually twenty-two, Director Buell, not twenty-three, uh, twenty-two employees who were on the original list, a number of the, a number of them have resigned. Essentially, they can go on and work for another school district, they just can't work for Portland anymore because they don't meet our expectations, because we do have high expectations as far as putting teachers in front of our students. Now, in regards to those employees who have resigned, we work with the union in terms of having them resign, and then the others, if we can find opportunities and other assignments at other schools where they could be successful in the district, we did that. But we can't do that for everyone. So, we are willing to talk to the union, we've been in discussions with the union, I've talked to them all the time, this is the first that I heard that they had an issue, I heard they had some concerns about using a plan of support, excuse me, and we just won't use it anymore. But I think the person who's going to suffer is our probationary employee who needs those supports identified. And when we look at non-renewing or non-exten, non-extending an employee, we don't take the plan of support, we look at how they have not met the expectations of the position.
Just one thing I wasn't following, you're saying we won't use the plan of support anymore?
Correct.
Is that because with the union we've negotiated?
That is correct.
Okay, thanks.
So we did use it?
We did use it, we've used it for a number of years, and so, we won't use it anymore.
That's a shame.
Yes, it is a shame to the employee who really wants that feedback in terms of what supports have been provided.
You know, can I, I would just like to add that I do, the staff does believe that they have followed the contract and, uh, and, you know, I, whichever union person doesn't believe it, that's what the grievance procedure is for.
Correct.
All right, so, we will vote on the amendment, you wanna read, oh, Steve, did you have something to say, Director?
Uh, no, Steve has his hand up.
Okay, this is obviously going to fail, so, uh, because it needs four votes and there's only a possible three here, so you got, okay, let's talk a little more about this, then. One of the thi, one of the things that schools do, and they do a pretty good job of it, is forcing people out, and they, they try to force people out, and then they get people to resign, and, which is fine, I think it's a good thing to do, but you shouldn't be resigning because we're doing a plan of support which has no, uh, actually has no validity in anything to do with the contract, and we still push people out. That's not, that's not right. We've, we've done that in some cases, evidently, we've got, we haven't followed our own contract in several different incident, incidences, and, I'm just saying, we follow the contract or we not? Let's just take a week and look and see if we are. Let's look and see if we are, and it's fine to sit up here and say, "Well, our, our staff must be perfect," and it's fine to say, "Well, the, the union is what, lying, or they're misinterpreting, or what are they doing wrong here?" We can say that, and, and we, we, we don't wanna take a week and sit down and straighten this mess out, this is a mess, we're going to get a grievance. Why should we wait, why should we wait for a grievance? Why don't we straight, take a week and straighten the mess out? I don't get it, why we wouldn't do that? Doesn't make any sense at all to me.
Again, we have no formal communication of any issue with these resolutions.
Here, there's formal communication. There it is.
All right, so, I don't know what that is, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, okay, so, would you please read our amendment that's on the table, Karen?
The motion is to vote on Resolutions 5407, 5408, and 5410 at your March fourteenth meeting.
Okay, okay, all in favor? Okay, all in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 All opposed, please indicate by saying no.
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 Oh, what a joy. Yes, I did three to three.
All right, so, seeing a-
Uh, Chair Constan, your board policy requires four yes votes to pass a resolution.
It didn't pass.
No.
Could I make another motion?
Uh, Director Rosen, did you have some, so, uh, seeing a vote of three to three on that amendment, uh, the amendment, um, does not pass.
Correct.
Director Rosen, did you?
Well, okay, I wanted to, I'm sorry, I wanted to make an amendment to pull out, um, 5410 from the remaining three.
Second.
And vote on that next week.
Okay, so-
Does that make sense?
Yeah, so you are putting forward an amendment to move Resolution five, only Resolution 5410 for consideration next week. Do I have a motion and a second to move Resolution 5410 to our consideration next week? So moved?
Second.
The second, okay, moved by Director Rosen, seconded by Director Buell. Do we have any discussion?
So, I guess I should explain, so, I thought there was compelling testimony tonight to have, I would like to get some more information about Mr. Bertrand's situation, so that's why I'd like to move it out a week, would just give me time to do it, I don't think we wanna do it in public, I, I don't really wanna ask questions here tonight, so, I would appreciate the board, um, giving me the opportunity to get some more information and just delay the vote a week.
Okay.
So, thanks for the indulgence.
The board will now vote, oh, excuse me, okay.
I'm sorry, I was not able to attend executive session, so I'm not sure, was, was this, was this discussed at executive session?
No.
This individual?
Just had numbers.
Yes.
I think it was in the packet, but I think I missed it.
Yes, yes, all this information was-
But I think I missed it, Pam, that's just what happened.
All right, so the board will now vote on the amendment to move Resolution 5410 to our consideration next week. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Uh, all oppose? Okay, uh, all opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? Um, so, by a vote of six to zero, this amendment has been approved, and we will consider Resolution 5410 at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Can I make a motion?
All right, thank you. Uh, yes.
Thank you. I move that we ask the superintendent to sit down in the next week and, and have both a union representative, or more than one, and our HR department go through each of the twenty-two original, uh, people and make sure that we followed the contract and that we did it responsible and, and treated them both responsibly and fairly.
Second.
Okay, we have a, um, motion and a second, we have discussion on this request of the superintendent.
Read it again.
Director Buell moved that the superintendent sit down in the next week and have both the union rep and our HR department go through each of the twenty-two original people and make sure we followed the contract and ensure we treated everyone responsibly and fairly.
So, if the twenty-two people have either resigned, been moved, or we terminated them just now, I'm missing the point of going through all of those again, and taking up our superintendent's time, and the union's time, and our staff's time, when we've already made a decision on all of these.
No, it's not just, we've made a decision, they've made a decision, as well, the employees.
Some of them have resigned, some of them have moved, so I don't, I, I don't see, I think it's a waste of our staff's time, and God knows they have precious little time these days.
All right, the board will now vote on this amendment. Oh, sorry.
We had a gal got lost in Mexico on a, on the plane, on a plane, and he was coming back from Mexico on the plane, and he got ill on his way to the plane and could not get out, and then he couldn't make the plane, he couldn't get out of Mexico for thirteen days. We fired him. We fired him. That's not right. Now, there might have been other things, but that was right there on the list, and I pointed out where we were firing the person or getting in trouble, getting the person in trouble, because they commented about their cat. That was in the stuff that we went over, they commented about their cat, and it made the person uncomfortable. Yeah, there was a, they also told a joke about their, uh, they told a joke about, uh, their midlife crisis, and it made the person uncomfortable. We put it in our stuff, so you tell a joke about a cat and you tell a, I mean, you comment on your cat and you tell a joke about a midlife crisis and we fire you, or we don't renew you, based on the say-so of somebody else. Is that, is that this school district? Is, are you proud of that, are we proud of that? I don't see how we can be proud of that. We've, we've got several incidents where we actually just clearly did not follow the contract.
Okay, Director Knowles?
And the-
I, uh, we have already gone through pages of information on each of these people, and I didn't see anybody that we fired because they had a cat or because they were on a plane.
You might, should've read them, I guess.
They were long, I read them all. There were many reasons, as I said, and lots and lots of support for these people to try and help them be teachers. It's expensive for Portland Public Schools to, to hire teachers and to train them, we want them to be good teachers, we work hard to make them good teachers, we do professional development all the time with our teachers because we value them, but if someone can't do the job, then they either can resign, or we have to help them out the door, and we've already made those decisions on all of these, so I'm, I skin, I can't quite figure out why we're considering this again.
And we did have lengthy discussion in executive session.
But we didn't have this material in executive session.
All right, so, are we ready to, uh, vote these? Are we ready to vote?
No, I'm ready, I wanna read, I wanna read the list. It's your, it's only chance, it's the only thing that I can do, 'cause you're gonna vote the same, uh, three to three, or four to two again, so I'm gonna read the list, maybe I'll convince somebody who cares about, who really cares about, uh, making sure that we do these things right for our employees. One, members were placed on the non, the non-extension, non-renewal list without having any identified unsatisfactory ratings on their evaluations at the component level.
Excuse me, is this, wait, Steve, can you just tell us what you're reading, did you write this, or from whom did this come?
This came from the, the PAT representative that I talked to.
Who's that?
Thank you, that was, uh, that is Marty Pavlik.
Okay.
The Joint PPS PAT Evaluation Handbook, which is incorporated into our contract in the Article twenty-three, Section eight, states the following. "A program of assistance for performance improvement, plan of assistance is designed to remedy unsatisfactory performance as measured by the evaluation rubric." Other language in the handbook, including the plan of assistance from, form, identifies that deficiencies are to be identified at the component level on the rubric, so for that person, we, if that was the case, we didn't follow the contract. Number two, "Former evaluations were often of minimal length and with several steps in the process being omitted." For example, one member had only one thirty-minute formal evaluation conducted on February first, twenty-seventeen, who was, February first, twenty-seventeen, who was then included on the list on non-extensions, non-renewals at the last- who was, February 1, 2017, who was then included on the list on non-extensions, non-renewals at the last minute. Evaluation steps and corresponding forms, such as pre-conference, formal observation, and post-conference forms, Forms 2, 3, and 4 in our evaluation handbook are missing. Please note that the evaluation handbook states the following, that's what we're supposed to be following. An evaluator may place the educator on a program of assistance at any time here sheet feels that a performance area needs remediation. However, this is typically done following multiple observations with pre- and post-observation discussions and feedback. Three, evaluations frequently had little or no relevant evidence to support unsatisfactory or developing ratings. Some evaluations had no evidence at all at the component level. Others may have had one or two statements that were descriptive in nature but were not indicators of problems as measured by the rubric. For example, interactions are respectful and positive between students. Article 23, Section C states, "An evaluator's rating of a professional educator in an element or a component shall be based on direct evidence. Supporting the rating in the evaluator shall include the evidence in the written evaluation." Four, evaluations frequently contain information not measured by the rubric or specifically excluded from the evaluation process by the evaluation handbook. These comments included everything from number of days absent, Mr. X has missed 13 days this school year, concerns that a member misuse leave that were not supported by the investigation into the incident, and concerns that members did not exceed other terms of the contract. For example, a member was negatively evaluated for not volunteering to give up his personal planning time to do collaborative work with his department. Mr. X has not always been available to collaborate with colleagues during department collaborations or during his first and fifth period prep, which he's not required to do, by the way. Another was negatively evaluated for not attending a meeting that was outside of his contract year. The evaluation handbook states the following. A program of assistance shall not be used for matters that are not measured by the rubric. Misconduct, for example, abuse of leave should be addressed using the appropriate discipline processes and procedures. So you got two things. You got misconduct, and you have firing people for their teaching. And those things don't necessarily go in the same situation. Five, frequently including complaints from staff, student, and parents that were not processed through the complaint procedure in our contract and not verified to be true. Article 23, evaluation requires that evaluation should be done only by licensed administrators. But we're putting in things about staff, student, and parents. What they say, okay, and so, which the administrator didn't see or even verify necessarily. The district created plans of support which are not included in our contract or the evaluation handbook in order to ignore the contractual requirements around plans of assistance. Both the evaluation article in the contract and the evaluation handbook contain specific language clarifying the procedures for plans of assistance. District administration seemed to tell building administrators not to follow the requirements of the contract and instead create an alternative called a plan of support. These plans generally did not follow contractual requirements, including but not limited to, not requiring that the plan's correct unsatisfactory performance as measured by the rubric, not requiring multiple formal observations with pre- and post-conferences, ignoring the two-meeting process identified in the evaluation handbook to collaboratively develop the plans, having multiple deficiencies to work on at once. The handbook states deficiencies should be identified at the component level. If there are multiple deficiencies, the educator evaluator shall focus only on two deficiencies at a time. This is further clarified and reinforced by the plan of assistance template. Allowing criteria not measured by the performance rubric to be included in the plans, including frequent complaints from staff, students, and others that were not processed through the complaint procedure or verified to be accurate, and having timelines that were not sufficient in length to allow for improvements to be made. Now, all this came up yesterday, and it came up because I called to check and make sure that we were fine on this. I thought we were fine. And it, so it wasn't the union calling and saying, hey, this needs to be taken care of, because I think they maybe have given up and they just think, well, we'll file a grievance and take care of it in a grievance, that's what we're doing, since nobody really seems to want to take care of this on our end and make sure we're in the same place. This was a list which was compiled in haste, and Marty Pavlik did not have enough time to get me a whole lot of, he's going to add other things that I didn't get to, which we could talk about, but I think the point's been made.
All right.
There you go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the time.
Would you mind one more time?
That the superintendent sit down in the next week.
No, we already, oh.
No, this is what you voted on.
Oh, sorry, okay.
And have both the union rep and our HR department go through each of the 22 original people and make sure we follow the contract and ensure we treated everyone responsibly and fairly.
You mean all the people who are already fired and gone?
Okay. Okay.
Guess we could vote to not treat them respectfully.
All right, so we will now vote on that amendment. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 All opposed, please indicate by saying no.
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 Three to three, motion fails.
Okay, so the motion fails due to a tie. And I would like to say personally that I take umbrage at the characterization of doing something differently in order to treat our employees fairly and with respect, because I believe that this process has been characterized by that.
Chair Constand, we still need a vote on Resolutions 5407 and 5408.
All right, so having removed 5410, we still have two items that have been pulled from the business agenda, which we will consider together, 5407 and 5408. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed, please indicate by saying no.
No.
Okay.
Three to three again?
Excuse me?
Three to three vote again?
Three to three.
So it fails.
Right, so the motion to...
Those resolutions are not approved.
Right. Excuse me. I, no, I believe this meeting is adjourned.